Good morning and welcome, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Orange County Public Schools Special Board Meeting, and we want to welcome the people that are here in the audience with us. We want to welcome anybody who is joining us via YouTube. We want to begin with a roll call because all of our board members are not present in the chambers. Let's start with Member Gallo.
Here, Madam Chair.
Member Lopez.
Here, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Covert.
Good morning, Chair.
Vice Chair Gould.
Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Gordon. Dr. Kestrel Dental.
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member Bird.
Here.
Thank you. Let me try again. Dr. Kestrel Dental, I'm sorry, Dr. Gordon. Okay, Dr. Gordon was with us just a minute ago as we were checking out our mics. So let us begin with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance before we check back in with Dr. Gordon.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I think it'd probably be a good thing to just find out how many board members didn't sleep very well last night. Thank you, Member Covert. Member Bird, I can't see all the hands raised, but, oh, all of us. This is a very important meeting, but I want to begin with a couple of announcements. First, let me check and see if we have Dr. Gordon back on the line with us. Dr. Gordon? Okay. Let me begin with a couple of quick announcements. So if you are watching us on the Orange County YouTube channel, OCPS YouTube channel, first I want to thank you for watching, and second, I want to ask if you will subscribe to us. The reason for this is that if we get 10,000 subscribers...
And then because, remember, it keeps jumping back and forth. Oh, you know why? You know why? You know what happened?
No, I don't know what happened. Dr. Gordon, you there with us? Okay, we are having technical difficulties still. We adjourned our meeting last week because we had technical difficulties with our two board members who were not present. We're trying this WebEx platform to try to make sure that the three board members that are not present today can equally participate. I see Dr. Gordon. Okay, Dr. Gordon, your mic is off right now. Is there anybody else that can help me? All I know is it looks like Dr. Gordon's mic is off, but I can't hear her. Try by phone? Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. John, could you try calling Dr. Gordon? She's talking. I can see her talking. I just can't hear her. John is going to try calling you, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. We hear you. We hear you.
Yeah, every time somebody comes in or every time somebody clicks out, it kicks in another... Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm talking to Serena. Hold on, I'm talking to the chair. One minute, just give me a minute. Okay, every time somebody comes in or they close out their screen, another sicko emblem appears on my school laptop, OCPS laptop. So anytime anybody goes in and out, like when Joanna came in, when Victor went out, it puts up... Serena's the one discovered that there were two. So that's when we went all the way out. When we came back in and when both of them are there, they control my mic and they control my camera. So the last time we had to go out, close it out so that the mic, that the video could show... I don't care about the video. I don't want, I don't have to be seen. I want to be heard. So the main thing is if the mic is working, I haven't touched it, both hands are under the table, I have not touched it, so I'm okay. I can just, because when you all go and we had already set it up at seven o'clock.
No, I understand.
I'm fine. I just needed to know about the chat, when do we get in, you know, or whatever. So I'm okay with, if you can hear me, Madam Chair, I'm fine. I'm fine.
We can hear you good, and I'm going to cover all that in a minute. I want to, just everybody that is on right now, please heed the advice of Dr. Gordon. Nobody get on or off because we need to keep everybody connected. Okay, so I was mentioning to those of you who are watching us on YouTube, if you could click Subscribe, what this will do for us, if we get to 10,000 subscribers, we will have free closed caption translation of our meetings, and that is very, very helpful to our deaf and hard of hearing. We had a few people write to us that with the mask on, those who are deaf cannot read our lips. So we have a sign language expert, I'm sorry, it's not the terminology, I didn't get much sleep either, interpreter, here with us to help with making sure that everyone can participate. So click, please subscribe, and this would be a big help to us. Secondly, I want to mention that at the last meeting, I noticed later, when I got home and was able to look at my emails, a number of people were emailing me during the meeting if they were having problems with either sound or they were having problems getting into the call, they were being dropped. So I do not monitor my emails during the meetings for a couple of reasons. One, because it is enough to stay engaged, fully engaged in the meetings, and listen to the speakers and engage with the board, and also because I think it's a little, it just gives some people more access when we're supposed to be here at the meeting. So if you need help, don't email me during the meeting, but if you need help, email supt@ocps.net. Supt@ocps.net. Someone will be monitoring and manning that website or that email address, and they can try to correct the technical problems. I want to know about those technical problems, but unfortunately, I can't try to address those technical problems and be present and active in the meeting. I hope you can understand that. Now, for our board members, what we will be doing is we'll be using the chat feature, as Dr. Gordon just asked about, we're going to use the chat feature. Use the chat feature for one purpose only, and that is to type the word "queue" if you want to be recognized, and it will be my responsibility to monitor the queues and, when appropriate, to call on the individual board members that wish to be recognized. So I'm also going to ask if everybody can please remember, this is not for dialogue between board members. That would not be appropriate to have dialogue during, between board members during a meeting that's not publicly visible to everybody else in the world. So this is only for typing in the letter "Q," and we do keep a copy of the chat so that if anybody does want to see what is being communicated, they have access to that. So we use that. The last thing, John will not be monitoring for input from board members, so this will only come through the chat feature. John will be keeping the clock, the timer for board member comments. And I think that takes care of our comments, or my comments, my introductory comments. Let me now turn to the superintendent for her comments and, I think, maybe an abbreviated presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I had my mute button. That was not a technical difficulty. That was my mute button. So I want to make a few comments, some clarifications, and then direct your attention to the actual document that is, again, in Board Docs with a, that was in Board Docs on Tuesday with a brief, a very minor change to it for your attention. So it's been about 100 years since this earth experienced its last pandemic. These are very challenging times. We all know families that have been impacted. Some of our own families have been impacted by COVID-19. I saw toddlers with face masks on. It is heart-wrenching that they may grow up to think this is normal. So we acknowledge the fear and the trepidation of our entire community, of our employees, our families, and our children. We are concerned as well, and yet we must move forward in public education. We are still called to lead in such a time as this. So I want to thank the community for their patience, their input, and the board for governing during these challenging times. I know how seriously you take your role, your job, and I know how you agonize over these decisions. I want to mention, just because I've had some inclination, and my cabinet has been concerned about this as well, I want to assure everyone that my central office and cabinet members and I will be working in assigned schools as well when we open. And again, I pray for our collective wisdom. Now, while our discussion may also go beyond this, we have a succinct decision before you today. It is our 2020-21 Florida's Optional Innovative Reopening Plan. The document was in Board Docs the last time we met. It is loaded again with a brief edit. I must stress again and again, plans are fluid and can change, as we have all learned, at a moment's notice. Data is being monitored at the local level for that very purpose, and we continue to watch the state actions. In your document, one substantive change from Tuesday is noted concerning Launch Ed on page three. All five days will be at home for the start of the Launch Ed option. There are cohort issues around keeping students together and then still having some moving in and out of the cohort. It makes contact tracing and other safety measures more complicated. We believe it is the safest measure to have all Launch Ed students at home for the five days, at least for the start of our opening. I also wanted to address concerns we've heard repeatedly about students, younger students in particular, sitting in front of a screen for six hours. Just as in our classrooms currently, there will certainly be breaks, lunch, recess, special areas, and interaction with peers. Our teachers are creative. We will not be expecting students to simply sit for six hours. I also know some families are planning to get together in small groups in their neighborhood to help create that interaction as well. At the same time, we must acknowledge that many of our children will continue the COVID slide, increasing our racial and socioeconomic gaps without some focused attention to their learning needs, needs that research supports are better served in person. We intend to actively encourage the Launch Ed selection by parents who are able. We're encouraged, in fact, by what my fellow superintendent, Mr. Griffin, shared with me, Dr. Griffin, shared with me this morning. In Seminole County, they have started parent registrations, and they are trending 70% preferring the home option. Osceola is at the 51% mark, the last we heard, and growing. So sort of a best-case scenario is that by selection, the vast majority of our students may be learning from home the first semester. Remember, at this point, if we do not provide the third choice, which is before you, families will only have two options, that is, face-to-face or OCBS. Chair asked that we have our Chief Financial Officer calculate the actual financial impact if you do not have this innovative option before you, which, by the way, grants, you will recall, grants full funding for those students in the FTE.
Dr. Jenkins?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Your headphones are starting to crackle again. I'm so sorry, but I'm afraid it's going to get worse. We have an extra set here. I wonder if we can just plug those in instead? I'm sorry.
Get them, John. I also, Chair, I also noticed when people's pictures pop up, that means your microphone's picking up sound from your area, so all board members, one picture popped up a minute ago. Make sure you're on mute as well. When your picture pops up, that means your sound is picking up.
While we're switching over, let me also take a moment. Dr. Gordon, can you hear me? What we're going to use is we're going to use the chat feature and just type in "Q" for the chat feature, and then I'll know to recognize you. Thank you.
Testing, testing.
So much better. Thank you.
So last I mentioned was that Seminole County is trending at 70% at home. So best-case scenario is that by choice, our parents select the stay-at-home feature, one of the stay-at-home features for their children. Osceola County was beyond the 50% mark the last I talked with Dr. Pace as well. So remember also, at this point, there are, if we don't approve the innovative option today, parents will have two options, that is, face-to-face and Orange County Virtual School. The Chair asked for our CFO to look at the financial impact. Remember, Orange County Virtual School receives less than full FTE funding, but the state has said if you are approved for an innovative option, a stay-at-home option, then you will receive... receive full funding. And so the scenario was this, if, let's say about 30% of our parents, just for the use of a number, let's say about 30% of our parents would be interested in Launch Ed. I believe the number would be greater, but bear with me just for the simulation, 30% would have picked Launch Ed. They don't have that option. They still want to keep their children at home. That means they have to choose Orange County Virtual, which gets the discounted amount of FTE dollars. So that scenario, at the chair's request, we asked our CFO to at least flush out the numbers for us. So K-12 basic students taught full-time earn about 20% to 25% less, on average, about $1,426 less than students who are taught in the traditional brick-and-mortar school, and by exception this year, that the state will offer for those in our innovative option. Should this scenario materialize with 30%, that equates to a loss of nearly $80 million. That estimated loss would equate to 1,141 teaching positions. That is critical to understand. The lack of that third option forces our parents who want to stay at home to the OCVS virtual school option, and it impacts us financially for the number of teachers we can employ because of that discounted funding. So I cannot stress enough how important it is for us to get our third option on the table and like our neighboring counties, start assessing where our parents will actually make their selections. We have a narrow window and a succinct decision before you today. Can't promise you what the future may bring, but would ask the board to support this innovative option for our families this morning. Once it is approved, we will start our registration process for parents and preference surveys for our teachers this afternoon so we can begin planning at each of our schools. And again, I want to assure you, central office, my cabinet, and I will also be working in our schools as they open. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So before we begin our discussion, I'm going to ask for us to have a motion and a second on the requested action, and then we can discuss, debate, and if necessary amend or change that motion. Is there a second? I mean, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
I'll move.
I'm sorry, who was that?
You'll move, Pam.
Thank you. A motion by Member Gould, Vice Chair Gould. Do we have a second? Member Gordon? Dr. Gordon? Okay. This is going to be difficult because we had earlier Dr. Gordon queued up. We also have Member Bird queued up.
Okay. All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, Dr. Gordon, I can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm not seconding this. I think this is ridiculous to second and put this motion on the floor immediately because once you give approval for this, you're making us think, you're making me think for my community after I've heard all of my, and when they came back in, I know I don't have a picture, that's fine, I don't need it. I am not in favor of putting the motion on the floor until we have discussed. Because once the motion is passed, you got your innovative. Based on that, I cannot go along with the innovative plan based on the way it is for the fact that this is Florida Optional Reentry Plan, and it could change at the moment. I don't know. I can speak for you. I can't speak for anybody on our board, but I don't know how it's going to change at the moment, and let me know when I get down to my last little five minutes, my last little two minutes. All five days at home, this is going to impact my community at the most. Today I got to speak for my community. Okay? What, and those workers in the community, what will they do for six hours? We have no idea. Okay? No child sits for nothing, and they're going to knock all of them things off the desk. I'm telling you. Okay? The parents who are able in Seminole County, I wish them well. Osceola County, we had our major meeting yesterday, one of them, and we are trying to work through what Dr. Pace is giving us to do. Okay? We may not, some of us may not even do, be able to. The virtual, we're using money. I don't know why we're not looking at Palm Beach. They all decided, no, they're going virtual, whatever. Okay? So yes, they're going to take money away from us anyhow. They've always taken money away from us. I just don't want to vote on this right now, but if y'all want to vote, I'll go ahead and cast mine. But it's too many missing links, and let me tell you the link that we are missing. We have a narrow window, and the board, they're the biggest bully that I've ever seen in my life to push something like this on us. It's the horse before the cart. We haven't even surveyed and figured out how educators are going to do Launch Ed. I have no idea. So what's going to happen to those of us that don't want to do Launch Ed? So I can't vote for this right now, and if you want to run it through, run it through. And I will not be able to vote with you on it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gordon. We do not have a second, so for lack of a second, the motion dies. Let's move on to, I believe Member Bird is next queued up. Member Bird? I cannot hear you.
Video? Can you hear me now? My video is frozen, so that's fine, as long as you can hear me. My question is about passing the motion. Doesn't that mean that we have to turn in this form that has the three assurances, and the first assurance says that we will assure that all brick-and-mortar schools are open at least five days per week? That's my question.
Dr. Jenkins?
That is correct. You cannot have a third option without the assurances that are presented there. And I want to be clear, nothing that I conveyed was to discount the fact that we would also have parents choosing the brick-and-mortar or OCVS. This is what the state plan is that it is, and it includes the brick-and-mortar.
Okay. All right. Well, in that case, I can't support a motion to approve it either because I believe my job as an elected school board member is to represent my community's interests on this board, and they have told me loud and clear that they do not want schools to open brick-and-mortar. And I also believe it's my job to ensure that students and staff have a safe learning environment. If we go back to brick-and-mortar, that puts many of our staff members in danger, in my view, with our numbers that we have right now. I believe that any plan that requires opening for face-to-face instruction under our current COVID conditions in Orange County does neither of those things that are part of my job, so I won't do it either. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bird. Dr. Jenkins?
I'm sorry. I need to clarify something. And so the emergency order puts brick-and-mortar as a requirement regardless of whether or not the board approves a plan for their innovation. The brick-and-mortar under the emergency order is required. The board doesn't have to approve brick-and-mortar. It is required under the emergency order. The way you get an innovation plan approved is that you also convey that you have the other assurances in place. Absent approving your innovative plan, you have brick-and-mortar required by the emergency order, and you have Orange County Virtual School, which is already in existence. This board cannot by a simple approval of your innovative plan determine whether or not you do brick-and-mortar. That is the commissioner's emergency order. Just want to be clear.
Dr. Jenkins, I do, I do think there's some confusion over this, but let's go to Dr. Gordon. Dr. Gordon, you recognize?
Oh, I don't remember pushing anything. I'm not going to take this turn. I'll come back on. I've already voiced my opinion. My parents, I don't feel, they feel that the horse is before the cart because this is our plan that we're submitting, and I don't know that much about it. So we should have, I should, I wish that we had asked the teachers and the custodians and the bus driver and the business partners and the health people, will this work? I, as a teacher, have looked into this plan, so it's kind of hard for me. It's the horse before the cart. We, I don't want to say we're going to do this, and we don't have nobody that want to do it. I wish you could have heard us yesterday. We know that the brick-and-mortar is there. They bullied us and told us you're going to do it regardless. We know that the other virtual school is there. So these parents are going to have to decide based on the bullies up there in Tallahassee that told us what we better do. Okay? So the parents, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to have no blood on my shoulder. I'm not going to try to tell you. I know how kids learn. I am an expert in teaching. I'm a teacher of over 52 years. So I couldn't put anybody in there. First of all, I don't know which one I'm going to pick or select. So I got to put myself in that place, Madam Chair. I'm very, I just think it should have been done first, and that's why we have a collective, supposed to be collaborative bargaining. Had we had collaborative bargaining, they would have met and not canceled our meetings. We would have had a plan that we could have presented to our parents, but they're not going to put this crap on us. They gave us two craps, and that's what we got because we trying to make up something to make our kids sick. Let me tell you about y'all masks. Y'all up there breathing hard in your mask. So make sure that you turn your mic off when you, because you can't get no air. We practiced putting the mask on for four hours yesterday, and it almost killed us, and it's about to kill you all up there. Okay? I'm not going to put anybody through that. We're trying to figure out how we going to take our children and scan them in the morning when we can't touch them, how we can't take off their masks. How do I know they don't have, they're not bringing in weapons of mass destruction? Okay? But I don't, we don't know. It's the horse before the cart. We need to know how these plans are going to work before we plan these plans. And when you fail to plan, you plan to fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Let's hear from Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have some questions, but I want to make a statement first. As board members, we're getting a lot of conflicting information from many different sources. You know, we're hearing that kids aren't contracting COVID as much, and then you read an article that says 30% of kids have it. We can't get kids tested here in Orange County. We're only 2,412 case difference between us and Palm Beach County, and yet Palm Beach County is allowed to go virtual education to start their year. So it just seems like we're being asked to make a decision, and I understand we're making a decision on the innovative model, not necessarily face-to-face, but without the lack of evidence-based or data-driven information. With that being said, Representative Placencia has been talking to the governor's office, and they reached back out to him today, and he told me I could share this with the board. It says that the governor's office told him that each district needs to do what's best for their community. They said that every county is different and that each county should do what is right for them. So that tells me that it is our decision per the governor's office. What I need to know is this plan, the innovative plan that's on the table, I know that we have to, it has to have face-to-face in order for it to approved. Is there anything in the plan that says at our next school board meeting, we can't come back and say, I'm sorry, numbers are too high, we're going to begin virtual, and we're going to use a Launch Ed method to go virtual at the beginning of the school year?
Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is nothing in your innovative plan that speaks to that. I've said repeatedly that it is a fluid plan. This board can take any action it deems appropriate in subsequent meetings. The question will be whether or not it is within the executive order and whether or not the state recognizes it. Nothing in this plan prohibits that. Member Gallo, it is not expressly stated at this point. It's not a requirement of the plan.
Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if we approve this innovation plan today, that does not mean if the board decides not to send our staff and students back face-to-face August 21st, it doesn't mean that we are making that commitment.
That's correct. At this point, you are saying on August 21st is your planned opening date. Subsequent action by the board would negate an innovative plan and the choices to the parents. I can't tell you what would happen tomorrow. I can tell you, plans have to be fluid because things are going to change from day to day. If something happens in our local community, if there's a determination around moving back to Phase 1, for example, in our entire community, that would have an impact absolutely on this. If the numbers continue to escalate, we've had some up and down, I believe, but if the numbers continue to escalate and our local health officials determine that it is too risky, then the decision could change as well. Or this board could by their authority say, we have decided, you just have consequences that go along with it. If the emergency order is still in place, then as your general counsel has told you, there are certain repercussions to such a decision in the future. I just can't predict the future for you right now, but nothing is in stone. It has to be fluid. What this plan does, Member Gallo, is give our parents a third choice like they have in Seminole and Osceola County and where the vast majority in our neighboring county is selecting the stay-at-home feature. This gives our parents that choice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So have you had an opportunity to speak to Dr. Pino since he came to the board, and has he given any further recommendations with our numbers? I mean, we were at 1,500 yesterday. Has he given us any indication that it's still safe to open?
I spoke with Dr. Pino on Monday before our meeting on Tuesday. He will stay in touch with us. They are monitoring the numbers. Keep in mind, they look for trends. I spoke to the mayor as well. They are watching trends. If we get to a point where the entire county has to back up, that will certainly impact us, and Dr. Pino will certainly give us his recommendation if there is a continuing trend. At this point, there is no intervention, no additional advice provided by the Department of Health, but he, but they will watch it daily.
Member Gallo?
Thank you. All right. So this is where my head is right now. I am, I'm willing to approve the innovation plan, but I'm not willing to commit to taking our staff and students back to school on August 24th. I won't commit to face-to-face. So I don't know if I can, if we can do that and what that will look like, but I just right now will not say I'm comfortable sending kids back face-to-face on August 21st. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Jenkins?
It is an assurance that's required in the plan. You have to state a date that you're going to return. Member Gallo, it is a fluid plan. We don't know what will happen between today and August 21st, or between today and August 13th, for that matter. We don't know what may happen tomorrow. It is a requirement in your plan in order for it to be approved, but it's not written It is, I'm sorry, and it is the same assurance that our neighboring counties had to include in their plans as well.
Anything further, Member Gallo, at this time?
Yes, I just have one more question. If the board votes down on the innovative plan, can you still submit it to the Department of Education under your authority?
So I've actually spoken with the chancellor on this fact. He believes that the superintendents can submit plans. I want the board's partnership on this because it speaks to the needs of our entire community. I might add also, when you talk about being able to survey, once we know where our parents land on their selections, our concerns may become less and less severe. I do think, Member Gallo, another possibility is that we submit our plan and also submit a letter, as you, as one of the board members mentioned previously, submit a letter expressing our concern and asking for some leniency. Can't tell you how that might turn out, but certainly we would be willing to have something drafted to go along with our plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm done.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Gordon, I'm going to call on you again. I hope. I hope this will be the, I just want to make sure that you wanted to be recognized now. So let me go ahead and call on you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I know, I know you can't see me, right?
No, but that's okay. We can hear you wonderfully.
Good. And I don't want to be seen because I'm full of it today. Okay. But this is my joy. This is my joy. Okay. I know that the superintendent, and I appreciate, Madam Gallo, asking that. And I do know that the superintendent, I can submit a plan, but as she stated, she would want her board with her. I'm sorry, I don't know what's, okay. I'm sorry. This is, okay, that's Orange County calling. I thought they were off today. Okay. All right. Okay. The submitting of another plan, listen, let me just, let me just share with you. Let me just share with you. I looked at that plan. That launch ed calls for cameras. I, you all had it on the agenda to be approved. I asked to move it to an item. But then it's not on there today, which is fine. I was warned that it would not be there. But that was my biggest fight because I called those companies. I talked with them. I wanted to address and let my board members know and speak to the issues that I spoke with some counties that were using it, and they're not even considering it in this. So I also found out that our staff was not well versed on launch ed cameras. Let me put it that way. So I went and I got a demonstration by the company. The company basically is out of, I won't tell you what way it is. It's a foreign country. Do your research. It's a foreign country. And they, I have some representatives floating around here, but there's one lady out in California. Oh, I tell you, it's Ukraine mostly. It's different. It's enough to bother me. Okay, I'll put it that way. The thing that got me, I found out exactly how many cameras will be going in for teachers use. So I would like to know what teachers will get these cameras. Then we don't even have enough of them to go around. Now, every school will get some. Okay, that didn't come, that didn't come to the table. That's why you're not aware of everything. And the reason why I became aware, when we did our report, and our report said, don't be afraid to time me because I'll get back on and continue, okay, with the same thought. I don't want to be rude today. I'm trying to be nice and let you see how serious this is for my community. You speak for yours, Teresa, you speak for everybody, but I'm speaking for District 5 today, okay? District 5 will probably be a recipient of some of the cameras. But you have to remember, District 5 is one of the most challenged districts that have been moving upward. If you don't move your most challenged district up, we will not be a district of excellency. And we are striving to be a district of excellency. We know that these schools are able and capable of becoming A schools because they've done it before. But if they are denied certain things that's going to help them be the top, then we have got to make sure. When I looked into it, I found out that it will not be enough to cover all of the schools in my district. The cameras will not. Then I found out that we are going to be piggybacking all of this was in your board agenda. We're going to be spending only $800,000 on the cameras when we've been allocated 1.4 million on the cameras. And then the other 600,000 was going to go to buy piggybacks. I don't know what those piggybacks camera look like. I don't know if they've been used. I don't know if they're second rated. You know, they got different kinds of those cameras, okay? The CDC, 5, and all that kind of crap. So y'all got all that information ahead of me, God bless you. But I had to go do my research when I pulled it not off the agenda. I pulled it to non-consent. You all didn't address it first before we went into talking because this is very important to parents. My parents are letting me know last night until 4 o'clock in the morning, they text me, call me, and they said, Ms. Cat, we never even got our laptops. So that's, that's my reason by not supporting this plan.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon, for that clarification. Member Lopez?
Madam Chair, if I can.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Dr. Jenkins?
Okay. So let me speak to the cameras. First of all, the swivel technology is only necessary if a teacher, by the time we see what our parent selections are, if a school has enough to have so many teachers at home teaching students on launch ed. But one teacher may have to have a small number in class as well as those at home because if numbers don't come out in perfect bundles, those are the classes that would need the swivel technology. Every classroom wouldn't need it. And certainly, teachers that are working from home, they have their webcam. They will not need the swivel technology. What was provided, we pulled off because it is not urgent at this point. We don't know how many classes might actually have to have some students present and some students at home if the numbers don't make exactly as we would hope once parents start registering. And that's why there is not a need at this point. Secondly, the piggyback terminology indicates that we are able to use another district who has made that purchase. We are able to use that contract in order to expedite the purchasing for our teachers. Once we have our parent registrations in place, we will know, schools will be able to make plans on how many teachers can be at home, hopefully large numbers if we, if Seminole County is any indication, and how many teachers may actually need to be at school. And if there is a class where they've both got a teacher in the room and some students at home, if the numbers don't make exactly for them, that is where the swivel technology cameras would be necessary. Just wanted to make that clarification, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let's go to Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to make a decision to put and risk the health and life of students, teachers, classified employees, and families. And I agree with school board member Gallo and with school board member Dr. Gordon. I'm not sure in so many points in the launch ed, for example, can we modify launch ed after this conversation before we vote in launch ed?
Dr. Jenkins?
I'm probably going to need to know what you mean by modify. So the plan before you meets the requirements that the state put in for your innovative model. So say more about what you were hoping to modify, Member Lopez?
For example, the flexibility on the schedule.
So the state requires your innovative plan needs to mirror your face-to-face brick-and-mortar option. I think our, I think individual teachers have always had the ability to direct their class. Nobody's going to ask students to sit in front of their camera for, in front of their computer for six hours. There's, there are breaks, there's lunch break, there is recess, there are all the things in the bell schedule that would be expected on launch ed as well. But you cannot say you're going to do an innovative model that only has, for example, three hours of instruction. That will not be approved. It has to be mirror the bell schedule of your brick-and-mortar students.
So my concern is the launch ed is linked to face-to-face education. Yes or no?
It's supposed to mirror, your innovative plan is supposed to mirror what's going on in the classrooms for other students. In fact, your bell schedule and your actual time is supposed to mirror it. I believe what the state was trying to assure is that we would not have students at home receiving much, far fewer minutes of instruction for, compared to those in face-to-face.
How much time do we have to submit an innovative plan?
By July 31st. That will place you, your back against the wall with parents having opportunities to make selections and with schools being able to make their plans for, for how schools start. And I want to be clear, certainly if this board directs me to submit it without their approval, I'm happy to do so.
Another question is, if we do not approve the launch ed, we're going to have teachers suffering the consequences and losing their jobs? That's what you were saying before?
Yeah, the scenario that we ran was if you only have two options, Member Lopez, you have an option purely to be face-to-face, which is in the executive order without any action on our part, without submitting a third option. We are under the emergency order that requires face-to-face learning. The other option is always in place. Parents can choose OCVS. In fact, we're up to about 5,000 compared to 250 previously. We're up to about 5,000 registered for Orange County Virtual. Those are the two choices. The carrot that the state has is that if you get an innovative plan approved, you will get full funding for those seats, for those students. Orange County Virtual School receives 20% to 25% less on average for students that are enrolled because it's virtual education. I imagine the state presumes you shouldn't need as many dollars because they are not in brick-and-mortar. That comes to $1,426 on average less. And so in the scenario that we ran, we said, what if about 30% of your parents would like this innovative option, but when it's taken away, if they want to keep their children at home, they only have the choice of Florida Virtual or Orange County Virtual? What is the financial impact of that many of your students switching over to Orange County Virtual compared to the innovative option that would get full funding? And those dollars came out rather significantly. It's close to 80 million, Member Lopez, in the scenario that we ran, which equates to, if you were equating 80 million out of your budget, it equates to 1,141 teaching positions.
I have another question. Did the district think and improve what we already have with distance learning to follow this executive order instead of creating something new?
Not sure I understood that question. Try me again.
Yes. Based on the Department of Education presentation, they were very concerned about the vulnerable kids, for example, ESC, ELLs, students with a high achievement gap. Did the district think about improving what we have with distance learning instead of creating a new plan?
That's a great question because other people may be confused as well. So launch ed is an avenue that we have had in place since we've been doing digital instruction. It gives us the opportunity to match or mirror what goes on in our classroom. So launch ed is not new. In fact, if we had to shut down and pivot entirely, we would be going to our launch ed. It is different than what we offered, what was called distance learning in the spring. If you will recall, it was, we had to negotiate and actually it guaranteed about three hours of connection with your teacher. The state specifically has said you will not have an innovative model approved unless it matches the time that you offer in your brick-and-mortar. And so our old distance learning could not meet those requirements. And you have to know, distance learning also included packets that were passing back and forth and just a vast difference between, from teacher to teacher and what parents were experiencing. I know you've got some of that feedback as well. And so instead, the state has said now, your innovative plan should not be what you offered in distance learning because it didn't meet certain requirements that they will now insist upon.
The last question is, do we have a time to get a survey from parents and teachers?
So the registration, we will send out to parents on the three possible options they can select. We will send that out this afternoon, absolutely. And then that will start directing what we can do further. Once we submit our plan, I will immediately, this afternoon, submit that registration form to our parents. That is what Osceola and Seminole County are doing currently. That's why we know 70% of their parents have already registered for at-home option.
If the school board does not approve the, the launch ed, can we have a survey from parents and teachers anyways or not?
You could certainly do that. I think you're losing time to just continue the survey. Survey, surveying what you would pick if it were available is going to put your schools and administration way behind in trying to plan for the start of the school year. Let's say we have a Hail Mary pass and we hope for something different from the state or we make a request for some kind of exception from the state. I don't think you can wait and not do anything else for the opening of schools without putting us in jeopardy of that executive order and offering free and public education to our children. So I think, Member Lopez, it would be wise for this board either to direct me to submit the plan or approve the plan if you see fit so that we can at least have parallel paths going so our parents can start making their selections and we can start making plans. They are fluid. If something changes in the meantime, we are not harmed by being prepared for this scenario. I think we have to be prepared.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, are we going to allow questions after the five-minute time period expires? Because if we're going to have to do that for one, we're going to have to do it for all members.
No, I think that the questions, that the five-minute period needs to include the time used to ask questions, not to answer them, but to ask them. Okay. And Mr. Palmieri, I'm relying on you then to interject. But again, let me restate this. If you're asking questions, Mr. Palmieri will stop the timer while they're being answered, but that all the question-answer does need to be factored in.
Madam Chair, that has not been our protocol in, in use of the clock in the past. I'm fine with that if that's what the board wants to do, but I think that should be a board decision because in the past, the five minutes has included and then we requeue up and, and then go back.
Member Gould, I'm not sure if we're saying the same thing or a different thing. You're saying that the five minutes is included in, I mean, that the question and answer is included in five minutes?
Correct. And then if we don't get all our questions answered, we get back in the queue.
I understood that to be the case. Was it your understanding that the answers also count towards your five minutes?
Correct. It's the entire body of that five minutes is that is our time to ask questions, receive answers. If we do not get all our answers in that time, then we have traditionally gone back into the queue.
Okay. You want to put that in the form of a motion?
No.
I'm not sure that we're all in agreement. Dr. Gordon has in the past, I know, stated that she did not believe that the answers should be part of her eat or wait at her time.
No, I am not.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Gordon.
Okay.
Absolutely, Dr. Gordon, go ahead.
Mrs. Gould is absolutely correct because the superintendent may need to shorten her answers because we did never get that before and we cut off the meeting and didn't get a chance to ask any of this. We cannot allow staff to take our time and we cannot allow our staff to go ahead at this particular point because we normally meet with staff before coming to the board table. Those have been our procedures. Your question and answer is all together. So John Palmieri, sitting in the attorney's seat today, is absolutely correct, but Mrs. Gould is even more correct on it because all of us would be waiting and waiting for Dr. Jenkins to answer questions all day long. And so you have to get back in the queue. And that is so easy to do with you mastering the helm on the chat. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Gould, for that.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. I'm mastering the helm in the order everybody is queuing. So let's go on to Member Cobert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think what has changed since that form came out and the order was issued was the governor's statement yesterday that each county has unique constituencies and that the DOE can recommend but not order each district what to do. In my mind, that is a change since that form came out and that the order was issued. That to me says we are, constitutional powers have somewhat been restored and we can make decisions about what is best for our county. I would like for the concept of the launch ed plan to be approved so that our parents and teachers have that option. Teachers can teach from home. Teachers can go into their classroom if they're comfortable. But our, the overwhelming number of parents and teachers that I have heard from actually actually like the Launch Ed option? I believe that we could approve the Launch Ed option, understanding that it can also continuously be improved. It has already been improved by allowing teachers to teach at home. It has already been improved by requiring the students to be at home in the Launch Ed option. But I believe it no longer requires us to have a one size fits all approach to the face to face option. I believe that it no longer requires five days, brick and mortar, everybody blanket statement. We had said in the beginning that we would use the advice of medical professionals. I still believe that we can do that. And that we can offer a return to school that is steady, phased, and step by step. That works for everyone. So I would submit that we submit the Launch Ed model and we line out the required five days, brick and mortar. And we insert that it will be the purview of the district under medical guidance from our local health professionals, when and how to return to school when it is safe. And if and when we do that, I have a lot of other ideas, how we do that and how we also make that an even better option for parents and teachers so that the majority of people are comfortable and can choose that option. We could open learning labs. We could call on our mayors. Every one of our municipalities within Orange County, we can call on them to open safe learning labs that working parents can have their students participate in Launch Ed in a safe and supervised environment. They could open them in the municipalities, in churches, temples, mosques, the science center, the Boys and Girls Club, and even in individual homes and little bubbles of three or four students where a parent can stay home and neighbors help each other. So it is my proposal that we approve the Launch Ed model, knowing that it can be improved and is fluid. But we line out the required five days per week every single school must open. And we develop a phased approach to go back to school. As we look at the data, we look at our positivity cases, we use medical advice, and then give parents that choice as they see fit. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Member Cobert. Just a minute to make sure. I believe Member Gould is next. Yes, Vice Chair Gould, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to my colleagues for their thoughts. We have got to help our community in this moment. And we cannot delay with some kind of a plan and pushing forward options. We are increasing mental and physical anxiety. We are leaving a lot on the table that cannot be answered until there is a plan to start structuring and getting into the nitty gritty detail of. So as Member Cobert stated, and as the superintendent stated, there is a lot of flexibility, but we have to submit something and move forward. It doesn't mean that we cannot change it based on what phase our county is in. Those counties that had gone virtual before Governor DeSantis's comments yesterday were following the phases of their county. They had moved back to Phase One, the stay at home order. We are currently in our county in Phase Two. I don't know how we work closely with our health department and our health professionals and our community at large if we don't work together within the phase and the partnership of that. I would like to ask Mr. Pomerini. I understand the governor made that statement. Is there anything in writing that has relieved us of the executive order put out by the commissioner?
Member Gould, can you hear me?
Yes.
No, ma'am, there has been nothing in writing. The way orders are superseded is that subsequent orders are issued. For example, if the emergency order was to be changed, the commissioner would have to issue another order changing it. If the governor were going to change his executive orders, he would have to issue a subsequent executive order to change it. I am very leery as a lawyer to rely upon verbal statements which may conflict with written orders that are still in place.
So with that said, while I appreciate the intel that Member Gallo received and certainly Governor DeSantis's support of our local, I do not think that we have been fully empowered to override that order. And what that means, if we defy the order, is that we will lose funding. We have the risk of, doesn't mean it will happen, but it's likely. We will have the risk of losing more funding, which we've already heard is going to be precarious at this time anyway. We would have the risk of all of us being removed from our seats and having the commission and Board of Education directly governing Orange County public schools. And we could take it to court. There's no question that we could. But how long would that take? And what damage would be done to our community in the interim without having our local finger on the pulp of what is going on and helping to navigate and flex the plan as needed? I would not want to turn over the governance of our operation to such a distant oversight personally. The other thing is, I don't believe we are voting on the firm calendar today. We're voting on the recommendation of opening schools on the 21st. I still want to explore, as I'm hearing other board members say, delaying as late as we possibly can in order to help flatten. But I have had, as many in the last three days especially, pleas to get some kind of structured education in the hands of our children. That is our highly gifted children to our underserved children. And we cannot ignore those pleas. Our job is to make sure that we can make every child successful moving forward. The best way that I see that today is to give multiple options and continue to work with our health providers in our county to assess where we are right now and even advocate to maybe change where we're phased. And send up the letter that was referred to earlier as well because that should be local partnerships' decision. It should not be dictated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Gould. Let's go to Member Castor Dennel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the comments by my colleagues. And I share their concern with what we're offering our students. And I have to say that I don't think that the template that we're given to submit our Launch Ed plan fits our current reality. Requiring the face to face to begin in August, I think, is irresponsible, given what's going on right now in Orange County. And things have changed in the last eight or nine days since we heard from Dr. Pino. We've had more record numbers of COVID cases. Our hospitalizations have increased. Our deaths are at a record levels as well. We do not currently have adequate testing or contact tracing. And our state is running low on the remdesivir that COVID patients need. And I don't believe our community is ready to open our schools if it means we could overwhelm our healthcare system. And I just think we need to face up to what is happening in our county and do what's best for our constituents. And until we have controlled the spread, I don't believe we can submit a plan that says we will open our doors five days a week. So I concur with Member Cobert about submitting a plan, striking that one line, requiring the face to face, or at least saying that the face to face, five day a week, will happen when the board, upon medical advice, deems it safe. And I do think that that is within our purview as the board. And I'm not sure I understand what the benefit is of the superintendent submitting a plan that the board would not approve.
Thank you, Member Castor Dennel. All right, let me weigh in on this. I think that the confusion and lack of clear, consistent direction from the state has been appalling. On Monday, I watched the governor say that he directed the FDOE and Commissioner Corcoran to work with locals the way he has worked with locals across the state. But then he reversed course in his comments and said that we needed our schools opened for our communities, for the well-being of our students. This is not an exact quote. And so that people could get back to work. Again, all not an exact quote, but in the course of his comments on this, he was confusing to me to understand where he was coming from. Then on the 15th, FDOE met. The governor spoke to FDOE. FDOE then had a discussion. Commissioner Corcoran doubled down on his mandate that we open our schools. A one member of the State Board of Education objected. No other members objected. And I think his direction stood that this order is in place and schools shall reopen. Let me take us off just for a minute to what the order says, assuming the order still stands. I don't know what stands, to be quite honest, at this point. The order says, and this is why I was concerned about the funding, under Section 3, "School districts charter school governing boards with an approved opening plan will receive reporting flexibility that is designed to provide financial continuity." It goes on, under B to say, "Full FTE credit for innovative learning environments. Although it is anticipated that most students will return full time to brick and mortar schools, some parents will continue their child's education through innovating learning environments." Goes on, "As described in this order, school boards with an approved reopening plan are authorized to report approved innovating learning students for full time FTE credits. However, students receiving virtual education will continue to receive FTE as provided in section..." Da, 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 da. So based on what Commissioner Corcoran order says and what Commissioner Corcoran continues to say, our only option, if we do not submit on a plan with an innovative approach, and it's not an option, the only things that our parents will have an option is to come face to face or virtual school. If they go virtual school, 30% of our, 30% go virtual school, we lose 1,000 teachers. If 60% go virtual school, more like what we're seeing in Seminole County, we lose over 2,000 teachers. I'm concerned about that. At the same time, Member Cobert mentioned that she heard the chancellor say that we didn't have to just rely on our local health department or our state health department. We could also rely on our local emergency management officer. Well, that's wonderful that he said that, but that's not what this order says. So does the chancellor know what Commissioner Corcoran's order says? I'm very confused. The two of them should be on the same page. And frankly, so should the governor. They work for him. Add to that, that in case anybody is not aware, when the state, when Commissioner Corcoran put this order out, he said you could have the health department basically give you a different advice and not reopen. Or you could have your local health department. For anybody who's not aware of this, the local health department is an entity of the state. Dr. Pino is appointed by the surgeon general, who is appointed by the governor. So the idea that we have local control based on this order is a falsehood. What this order says is you will not open, you will open schools unless the state tells you, you don't have to open schools. There was no local control, and I think that was very intentional. At the same time, we now have the governor saying that he wants local cooperation and he doesn't want us to be required to open schools. I'm concerned about semantics here. It is possible that the governor responding to the pressure he's receiving is changing positions. I think that's highly likely, right? But I also want to be mindful, that is also possible. When he says we're not required, well, this order doesn't require us to, okay? It requires if we want to get funded, we will. If we don't get funded, we're in serious trouble. Our teachers are in trouble. Our students are in trouble. Our parents are in trouble. So I'll be candid with you, for the first time in 20 years, I have completely, well, not that I've never been confused by the state. I have never felt that there was more lack of clarity and confusion than there is right this minute. Next time around, I will respond with what I think could be a direction for us at this point. But I will end with this. We do need to give some clarity and certainty to everyone involved, our teachers, our parents, our entire community, as quickly as we can. Thank you. All right, let me go to our next speaker. Dr. Gordon, you're recognized.
Thank you. I have, I did not get an opportunity to show the other slides and to explain them. If it's any way possible to cut me down from my, the next time I think this, I want to show my video. And once the video is through, I won't have any comment on that. I'll come back and comment when I come back on for my other two slides. I just want to show my video.
Okay, so Dr. Gordon, I'm going to check and see if it's queued up right now.
Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins, is it queued up?
I believe it is. Run it.
Okay, great.
Yes, there is an issue around how much and to what extent children participate in transmission. There are real issues around how schools can be reopened safely. But the best and safest way to reopen schools is in the context of low community transmission that has been effectively suppressed by a broad-based comprehensive strategy. You can't move from, let's deal with the schools, and then we all deal with that for a week or two, and then let's deal with the...
Video. I can't understand you, Chairman. Say again.
I am so sorry. I'm getting indication from the media that's in the room that they'd like to carry the video that Dr. Gordon is asking us, but they cannot see it. They cannot see it. It's not coming up. Is that the issue? Can't see it or hear it? Can't hear it?
We'll have our media folks touch base with them. Hold on that for a second. Just for everyone's understanding, this is the same video that was played on Tuesdays.
That's, no explanation needed. They, most of the people didn't see it. Let's see if they can get it up.
Further media in the room, you may be able to queue it from there, but let our sound folks touch base with you in the back.
All right, can we start it over again? Because I want to follow the whole thing, and I think we all do.
Yes, there is an issue around how much and to what extent children participate in transmission. There are real issues around how schools can be reopened safely. But the best and safest way to reopen schools is in the context of low community transmission that has been effectively suppressed by a broad-based comprehensive strategy. We can't move from, let's deal with the schools, and then we all deal with that for a week or two, and then let's deal with the workplace. Or then let's deal with infection in hospitals or long-term care facilities. This is playing whack-a-mole. We have got to focus on a comprehensive, long-term strategy that focuses on everything at one time. But we can't turn schools into yet another political football in this game. It's not fair on our children. So we have to look at this carefully in the light of the transmission in any given country or any given setting. And we have to make decisions that are based on the best interests of our children, be it their educational or their health interest. And that must be based on data. That must be based on understanding the risks in the specific setting in which schools are. If we suppress the virus in our society, in our communities, then our schools can open safely. And there are many countries around the world in which schools are reopening successfully and safely because countries have dealt with the real problem, community transmission.
Thank you.
Dr. Gordon, did you have further comments?
No comments at this time. I don't want to go back because I'm going to... I don't want to go back, because I'm going to come back with two other slides when I queue back up.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Let's go to Member Bird.
Yeah, I have a question. Can you explain, Mr. Palmorini, how Palm Beach County has said that they are only opening with virtual learning, if they are required to submit the same assurances in their innovative plan that we are?
Thank you, Member Bird. My understanding is Palm Beach County's in Phase 1. Phase 1 prevents the gathering of any more than 10 people in one room at a time. They're in a different phase than us. And so, with respect to that phase, that's the reason why they're not going to open. If we were in Phase 1, I think we would be in the same position as Palm Beach County. But we are not in Phase 1. We are currently in Phase 2.
Okay, thank you. And I agree with Member Cobert that I think that we do need to have an innovative plan submitted and get it approved so that we have that option, A, for our families that want to stay connected to their schools. Also, I think it's important for our funding, as the Chair has pointed out. But I'm nervous about submitting it with that assurance, number one, that says brick-and-mortar schools have to be open. So if we could find a way, or if we could submit it with striking that, as Member Cobert suggested, I would be in favor of doing that. Without that, it makes me a little nervous, because it basically says that we will open brick-and-mortar schools. I also feel that, as Member Cobert said, and I also mentioned Tuesday night, that we need to, if we can open virtually, that we do need to open our schools and talk to our communities about opening learning labs for our children that need supervision during the day to do their virtual learning. So that is something that I would want us to explore. But I want to get this approved as well, because I want to have that option, but I'm not comfortable with Assurance 1, opening brick-and-mortar school guarantee. That's it.
Thank you, Member Bird. Understood loud and clear. Let's move on to... I'm sorry. I think Vice Chair, I think yours was just a question about the clock. Let me go to Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Will they put on the slides for me, please? I think I could cover them in the four minutes.
Absolutely.
I think I have four minutes, right?
No, you have five minutes. Let's put up the... The time doesn't start until we get up the slides. So let me make sure we have those. Do we have the slides available? Hold with us just a minute, Dr. Gordon. Dr. Jenkins, are we working on the slides?
Yep, bring them up.
Okay. I'm sorry, Dr. Gordon, I know you announced when you were up last time that you wanted to cover the slides. Next, I don't know why they're not ready.
That's okay. I'm okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Madam Chair, I can certainly clarify something while we're waiting.
Please, no, please don't interject with me, because you're going to give me another thought. Please let me get my thought.
That's fine, that's fine.
Come back. Please don't do that, Madam Super-Deadened, I'm sorry. Because you might throw something in there that's going to throw me off.
We will.
I just want to just show these two slides and explain very briefly something. I don't want another thought. I want my Board members to focus on what the World Health Organization Director stated. I want them to listen and play that over and over and over. This is not whack-a-mole.
Here we go.
Big Bad Wolf in Tallahassee has spoken. Okay. I want you to read this yourself. If this was a knee-on-the-neck, and that's what it is, a knee-on-the-neck, look where we are. I explained to you last week, if I wanted to go home to South Carolina, my birth state, I'm in bad condition. Hit my grandchildren, try to raise them there, I'm in bad shape. This is nothing to play with. We talk about Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3. We are worse than New York, and we can't get Big Bad Wolf leaders to say Phase 1 so we can play around with Phase 1? Change the slide. I hope you saw the countries. We are number two and three, but my home state. Change the next slide. Thank you, Madam Chair, on that.
Absolutely. We're waiting for this next slide.
I think you all really need, while we're waiting, Dr. Michael Ryan... Michael Ryan is an Executive Director for World Health Organization. He was told that these pandemics was coming, under President Obama's administration, President Bush's administration, President Reagan's administration. All of this has been told that this was coming. And we failed because of leadership, not at the high school level. Dr. Jenkins is doing a great job there. Okay, this has changed, because when I brought this to you, I think it was the 13th, look where we were. That was Phase 1. We closed the school. I'm not going, Madam Cobert, Madam Teresa, Madam Joanna, Madalinda Cobert again. I'm not listening to them. Look where we were when Florida stayed at home and closed the school. Go back and look at where we were when we all went on spring break. Look at where we were. Do we all have to die before we get to Phase 1? Then they telling us we're going to send them out to face-to-face? Give us helmets, masks, we're teachers. Give us our uniforms, give us the folk covering like you give the hospitals, and we'll teach anywhere. Look at where we were. Look at July 13th. And look at last night, I stayed up till 4:00, so I can hear World News Tonight and see what they said. And you're going to try to decide? No, this plan is not good enough. Dr. Jenkins, now she can interject. I called around to those districts that was using launch ad, those swivel cameras. I got statistics to show you how successful and unsuccessful they were. Not one of them, not even Lake County, is putting it in their plan. I didn't see it in there. Now, I want Dr. Jenkins to tell me where this has been successful in the United States. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So swivel cameras are not required, they are simply an additional tool. We don't have to have the swivel cameras at all, if that is of concern. It's just an additional tool that our teachers would be able to use if they happen to have a classroom that had a small number in person and a small number at home. It is not...
Okay, stop, stop. I don't want her to keep going on, because I need the parents to hear this, because they're listening. Don't get impatient, Dr. Jenkins. We should have been explaining all of this previously. If they're not additional, how is that teacher going to keep those kids behaved at home and sitting in the room with them? And show me what districts that you know, since we work with 75 of the top in the Council of Great City Schools, 75 of the largest challenge districts in the world, how are they utilizing this? They don't have any document on that. The little bit I have, so just tell me, how? If it's not required, how are my challenge students going to grasp this? If the teacher is trying to keep behavior, I teach what the ones face to face in the room, and then the ones at home, when she told her, "Go have a snack, go get a snack, Johnny." Johnny going to get a snack, Johnny goes out the door, and Johnny...
Time, Dr. Gordon.
Teacher have totally lost control of the class, Johnny.
Time, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of comments. First, regarding swivel technology, Council of Great City Schools, I believe Greensboro was the one on the last conference call that was talking about their past use of it. We have some swivel cameras that we've actually used previously here in Orange County public schools. Not a requirement, but a tool that can be used, where the teacher can hands-free not be tied to their laptop to communicate with students, but able to move around the room in order to convey instruction. And so we can certainly get the Board more information around that. It is not a requirement. In fact, it will be less needed. If our parents choose enlarged numbers to be at home, then we shouldn't have to have a split class on campus. I just can't guarantee that they'll come in neat little bundles, that we might not have some in need of it. But we have some folks that have been using swivel cameras here in Orange County, happy to get the Board more information about that.
And you give me the statistics on that.
I will, yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Vice Chair Gould.
I'm sorry, I was going to... I thought that was my chance. I thought that was my chance to clarify one other thing, Madam Chair, if I may.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I want to be clear on a matter, because I asked specifically around this notion of submitting plans without the assurances as early as this morning, and it was indicated to me those plans would not be approved. And so, in the essence of time and what we know as of today, as of this morning, I would hope the Board might consider separating out a letter with a request or some communication, but submit the plan with what is required for approval. Otherwise, our parents, our teachers, our families, everyone is left in limbo, and my communication this morning indicated any such plan without all of the assurances, including brick-and-mortar, would not be approved. So I wanted to convey that to the Board again. It is not in stone. I can't tell you, something might not change this afternoon, this morning. Any plan without the assurances, including brick-and-mortar, would not be approved. Who knows what might change today, tomorrow, next week? But as of today, if we want to give our teachers, our families, our community, the ability to start making plans in case nothing else changes, then the plan has to be as stated. I'd also like to make a brief comment. I've had this conversation with some individuals. I'm a little hesitant as well to put together labs for our most needy children and put with them what might be considered less than highest-qualified individuals and lowest-paid individuals to supervise them. That is a bit of a concern to me as well. I don't know what the final solutions will be for our community, but if learning labs mean, as was described on Tuesday, having teacher aides be with some of those children who need the most assistance in their learning, I don't think that equates to trying to help narrow achievement gaps and make up for that COVID slide, so much lost time for our underserved populations already. May sound like a reasonable solution, but you would be asking our lowest-paid individuals to help our most needy students in a scenario like that, which is of concern. And I've conveyed that to individuals as well.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let's go to Vice Chair Gould.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to...
And just for clarification on where we are in the speaking order?
Yes, sir. Did I miss somebody?
Mrs. Lopez at 10:07, because we had Dr. Gordon at 9:58, and then you, 9:59.
I was actually before that.
No, John? I'm sorry, can I have the floor for a minute? John, Dr. Gordon was recognized because she queued in at 9:44, then Pam Gould at 9:46, then Gallo at 9:46, then... And then Dr. Gordon again, and then me. So you're just way far ahead of where we are.
I apologize.
Hey, it's happened to me. I know how hard it is, that's why I'm trying to find a method here to keep it straight. So let me go to Vice Chair Gould.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to have to get off my headset, my battery's dying.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair, we can't hear you.
Okay, hold on.
We can hear you now.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to follow up. I don't want my community to misconstrue that I want to put anybody at a higher risk. What I am saying is that we have to get out of paralysis, and that we need to submit a plan that is going to be fluid. I would also suggest that we, if we feel strongly about going back to Phase 1, so that we have that ability to have the distance learning, whether it's through launched ed or our Orange County virtual, that we appeal to the mayor of the county regarding that. Because that is where that government lies, on what phase our county is in. And we have to be prepared to help our students. Health and safety is absolutely vitally important and part of what we do every day, but our core mission and vision is to have every child successful. And the emails that I've gotten and some of the discussions I've had in the last several days in particular, it makes me cry as to the desperate state some of these families feel, and how far behind they feel their children are, and that we're abandoning them. And so we've got to have a plan that we can begin to shape that and move forward as we work together with our community through this phase to combat this disease. It doesn't abstain us from doing everything that we possibly can with the care dollars through partnerships. I'm trying to get shields donated, thousands of shields donated, so that we have that option for additional security and safety and health benefit. It doesn't mean we don't do all of those things. But we can't be in paralysis. We can't risk any more funding to our delivery system, or for a very long time, our students will be hurt by this. Not just by the disease, but by the results of our decisions here today, if we don't have a runway to be able to land a plane on at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Let me ask Vice Chair, let me ask, you had some headphones, and the battery died. Can you charge those right now? Good, thank you, because we were getting some wicked reverberation. Thank you. All right, let's go to Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just asked the jury if we could submit a plan that said we didn't have to open in August, if it would be denied, and I was told, yes, it would be denied. So Dr. Jenkins is correct. Here's my thought process. I agree with Member Cobert and Member Bird that we have to get a plan approved, for the sake of our students, for the sake of our community. I will support approving that plan today, but I want to be very clear, that doesn't mean that I'm supporting going back to a brick-and-mortar setting in August if our numbers are as high as they are now. I won't risk our students and our staff, but I feel like we can approve a plan and still have the option of going virtual with that plan in August, if the numbers are as high as they are. So I just want to make that very clear. I do have some questions, but I just want to be very clear. I think that we have to get this plan approved, because if we go virtual, then... that we have to get this plan approved, because if we go virtual, then we stand a chance of losing money and we can't, we can't move our teachers to that Launch Ed model from home to teach those kids. And we want, we want to be able to do that virtually. So that's just kind of where my mind is at right now. I do have a question about Launch Ed, because our numbers are so bad, with our ESE kids. I've been asked if, if, what happens to students in self-contained classes? Will they be included in the innovation model? Which I'm assuming it will, because it's in the insurance, because they wouldn't have any options aside from face-to-face. And if the ESE kids won't, do not, if the parents of ESE students do not wish to send them back face-to-face, how will we get them the services that they need so they don't further regress?
Dr. Jenkins, I'm sorry.
Member Gallo, appreciate your comments. Yes, for the innovative option, you do have to have accommodations for your students with special needs, so they are provided for there. They can also do Launch Ed at home. Their teachers would be online with them. Where they have special services provided, they would be able to, by appointment, come into their school setting to receive those services, or receive them through some kind of digital means. For example, a speech pathologist might be online with an individual child and working with them. An OT service, for example, might be provided by appointment where they actually come to their school face-to-face. Our IEPs would have to be met through some creative means, but absolutely our ESE students would have the option for Launch Ed as well.
Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so. You know, this is just, we don't even have good information and we're asked as a board to make this impossible decision. Again, I think that, in the words of the governor, that we need to be safe, we need to be smart, we need to do it step-by-step. We do need a phased-in approach. I understand what Dr. Jenkins is saying about the learning labs, but I think that we might be able to make that work if we have a teacher teaching virtually and then work with community partners on having people in with the classroom and the teachers there still teaching just like that child was at home, but they're in a brick and mortar building because their parents have to go to work. So we have to acknowledge that parents have to go back to work. I think we can make something like that work, and I'd like us to explore that as well. I just think we need, we just need to be safe and we can't put students and teachers at risk and our classified at risk. I want to be very clear, from my classified employees, that I heard you lobbying clear. I meant no disrespect when I said that teachers deserve to be paid in August on Tuesday. And I said teachers, sometimes I use that uniformly, and I really do mean all employees. Please understand that. So with that said, I'll just reiterate, I will support signing or approving this plan today, but I want to be clear, that does not mean that I think that we should go back to face-to-face instruction in August, or that I will support face-to-face instruction in August. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Gallo, for clarif, yeah, for being very clear about your position. Appreciate that. Let's go to Dr. Gordon.
Oh, thank you very much. I really love my colleagues and I appreciate them, but for those of you that can find people in the neighborhood that would help with their children, when I have grandparents mostly taking care of kids in the neighborhood, and I never thought I would be saying this, I never thought that I would be looking forward in November to be taking my grandkids to school in Lake County, my grandkids, and taking my four Lake County, well, two of them in college, so they don't want me to take them anywhere but to do something fun. But to taking my grandkids to school, I would love to do that in Orange County. That would be nice, but we have no choice. The governor already, the big bad boys, already said, you got, you already got this. I went online and I saw that over 5,000 parents have rented their kids for Orange County Virtual School. I think what we need to do is write a waiver. The waiver should be for them to pay full-time. The governor could do that, just like they made that law to take half of the money. We are in a pandemic. We need to be in Phase One. You, we as a board, need to ask them, go the devil to, I'm trying not to curse, go the devil to Phase One. If we go to Phase One, we could deal with Palm Bay Beach County and so many others did, distant learning. They shut it down. They're distant learning until this pandemic could go. Yes, COVID, you all will be killing, because even if they did Launch Ed, somebody got to still go in that room. I gotta go in my room. Even this year, I still gotta go in my room and close out. I gotta go back and teach, and I'm going back and teach. That's the only, I love teaching. I love teaching. I will be the one to go back, but I will not make my parents and all of them go back, get into this Launch Ed that we don't know that much about. I did want Dr. Jenkins to please get the information before the meeting is over and how successful the data would be. And I addressed that to the chair and to Dr. Jenkins to show me that. That's wild camera. What will the kids be doing? I heard her opening statement said that they will not be sitting for six hours, who will be supervising them? These parents gotta work. There are a lot of parents that found out when we quit in March, they were very successful working at home. I beg Dr. Jenkins to ask Atlanta half of her staff, don't put them in that building. People caught COVID in that building. Don't put them in there. Don't let them come every other day. They said that it'll die down in 24 hours. We were out there trying to think through. And from the school, I love you too, but for me to look for you to give shield, they gave us a little bit of care money to buy all those shield. My summer school teachers, they have the shield. I would have put the picture up and they would have killed me. I wish you could see how they look in the shields. I also heard, we don't have enough. Our high school teachers got hundreds of kids in their session all morning. I teach kindergarten first, second, and third in the library. My library is gonna have to have one child at a table on the east side, so many tables on the east side, so many on the west. We gotta do the same thing here. My point that I'm making is that we need to ask them a waiver to give full-time. Our parents need to demand that Tallahassee give us full-time pay for our teachers. Then we got all of our teachers, and then those teachers that want to go face-to-face, which is mandated by the big bad wolf, that's mandated, let those teachers like me who want to go back, go back. Because we think we might be saved even though I'm in the danger zone, but I'm willing to do that. I don't mind. But I'm not going to put children in harm way to come up with a plan that this board knows nothing about, never seen it operated, never went anywhere to visit any other schools to see if any kids are dying, are living. And then you see teachers are dying, they own ventilators, they are sick, UTE Paris Celebration just had the custodian, he's in the hospital now. Everybody's baby pecked it. They're not showing you the little children that are passing away. And I'm not trying to scare you, because some of you are big bad wolves. You don't want to wear the mask, you don't want to, you don't want to put on the house mask, you want to go shopping the way you want to go, go. I wrote something on Facebook the other day, and I told people that if that's what you want to do, do it. If that's what you want to do, if you're free to wear your mask or not, you're free to stay in or go out. We should be in Phase One, where we all stay in, and we saw the data that showed where we were saying.
Dr. Gordon, time.
If you want to send your precious babies to school, do it. If not, don't. Believe that the virus is real? Are a hoax? Believe that the virus is out there to get you? Believe that you are immune, or that you're not immune, or that you're not a carrier? Believe that a cure is on the way? You better believe in God Almighty that He get us through that. Thank you. I shut up right now. Thank you. I'm voting no on any waivers proposals.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
At this moment, until one hits the table that sounds right.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Let me, let me make a suggestion here. I agree with what Member Gallo said. I agree with most everything I've heard here.
Madam Chair, you're blocking your screen.
Oh, thank you. I sure am with my notes. And I don't like the idea, given the rate of transmission, given the amount of time it takes to get a test. By the way, if you test positive, you have to take a test in two weeks, even if you're asymptomatic. You take the second test, it will take anywhere between five to seven days to get the results back. So if we have a teacher out, we're gonna have a teacher out for three weeks, and possibly longer, because if that second test comes back positive, then it's a whole another week because of the delay in getting the results from the test. We're not where we need to be. We could have a single teacher out for three or four weeks. Imagine if we have a number of teachers out. I'm not even talking about the impact on our children. I'm just talking about the sheer logistics of operating our schools. The testing is not where it needs to be. It's not where the governor wants it to be. The timeframe is not where it needs to be. The transmission rate is too high. There are so many things that cause me literally not to sleep at night, thinking about all the things that can go wrong. Unfortunately, I also know if we do not submit a plan, the best option that we have to get parents to keep their children home, if they possibly can, we may very well deprive ourselves of. That situation could change, but we need to do something now. So I still support submitting the innovative approach. I am happy to talk about any kind of changes we need to make to get the board comfortable, get rid of swivel cameras, make that optional, make that a teacher's choice. But I think we need to get a plan in so that we are, have secured our funding at this stage. I think we then, I also think we need to send in a very strong letter to the governor and to Commissioner Corcoran, and to explain our significant reservations, that this rash approach towards telling us has not given local districts the opportunity to come up with the best options to keep our children and our teachers safe, and to plead with the governor to give us more flexibility. And whether we call it a waiver, whatever we call it, but I think we send that letter in. I think we make sure our parents know of our concerns. And next, and we've all talked about this, next we need to be surveying, and more than a survey, we need a commitment from our parents and our teachers. We need to know how many of our teachers are able to come back and willing to come back in the classroom. Because at the end of the day, if our teachers are not coming back in the classroom, we can have all the best plans in the world. The governor can mandate whatever the heck they want. But if teachers do not show up in the classroom because they're concerned about their health or their family's health, guess what? There is no, this whole thing falls apart. So we need to know how many of our teachers are willing and able to come in, how many of them need to take family medical leave, given the circumstances. And we need to know what our parents' choices are. With that information, we will be poised then to see, can we make this work, or can't we make it work? If we can't make it work, because we have too many children and not enough teachers, then I think we have a compelling case to go back to the governor and say, we appreciate the commissioner's intent, but it is not going to work right now. And then I think our chances of getting a change are much greater than they are right this minute. I think they're growing better every day. I do think every day, we're getting closer to a change in the state's position. But I think we've got to move right now on getting a plan up that we can get approval on, getting the information out to our parents, along with the letter that we're sending, that warns our parents in an honest way. Like Dr. Gordon said, I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm wanting to make sure people are aware of what we can and can't guarantee. When the state's plan says that we should social distance, and then it's at the end says, when feasible. I'm like, okay, you know what? If all the kids show up, it's never feasible. Let's not mislead our parents. That's not fair. It's not fair to anybody to give them anything less than completely accurate information when they're deciding what their children are going to do, right? So I think we need to be part of the truth squad here, to share with our parents what we can and what we can't do, so that they will make the best choice. I also think, and several of you all have said this, I think we've got to work really hard on figuring out, what do we do for those children, our most vulnerable children, whose parents have to go back to work? What is that environment that we create that allows our teachers to remain safe, our children to remain educated, in the safest environment we can create? And we can't know that until we know how many of our children are intending to come back to school. But we do need to be able to bus our children. We need to be able to care for our children. I'm not saying I'm getting, I'm getting the, you know, the body language from the folks in the audience, but we have that obligation. All right, let's go to our next speaker. John, I appreciate, by the way, you tracking and trying to help me, even though you were off that one time. Don't stop, okay? Because like right now, I could use your help. Where am I? Johanna? I think I meant Dr. Jenkins.
Dr. Jenkins and Ms. Lopez.
Okay, Dr. Jenkins. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the feedback. And I was going to say, one, finance officers did submit, several finance officers submitted a request that we get full funding for Florida Virtual and Orange County Virtual School. There has been no response to that request, but we can certainly add that to the communication from this board, again, asking that there be full funding for those virtual education students as well. And then just to do away with any confusion, because it is a tool that can be used or not used, not necessary to have it mentioned anywhere, at the bottom of page three of the document, mention the robotic cameras, I will strike. And one other thing I was going to mention, so Kelly Services, who provide our subs, have those individuals in training as well now, and will try to support us as much as they can. But as the chair mentioned, we've got to start producing some numbers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let's go to Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm still having my reservations with Launch Ed because of the link with the face-to-face. I think the COVID-19 cases in Florida, specifically in Central Florida, are growing. I don't know why we're still in Phase Two, so I won't be surprised that we get in Phase One soon. We are worse than New York, and New York closed the schools. The governor of New York officially said that they're gonna close the schools, and even California as well. So it's very concerning. I'm sorry. I hear somebody speaking. So on the face-to-face education, I have questions about transportation. I don't know if that's going to change. I implore to make changes on that, because during the work session, the district was saying that we cannot follow the CDC guidelines on transportations. That is not practical for us to guarantee the distance between students. And for me, it's very concerning, specifically for our students, the low-income students, and our brown and black students that are the community that is gonna be more in the transportation, and maybe in the face-to-face education. I also have questions about the PE teachers, specials, teachers like arts and music, if we have the face-to-face because of the Launch Ed would be approved. Also about recess and after curriculum activities, I still have concerns. And also about the strategies that we will be following to protect our children and our classified staffs and also instructional staff. So I agree with Dr. Gordon, and I'm not gonna approve the Launch Ed at this moment, until I have an answer that we are not going to have a link with the traditional education with face-to-face. But I think that is very appealing. As a mother, I see a lot of positive facts as well on the Launch Ed, but linking to face-to-face because of the governor and the executive board, all of that make me think that I don't want to have on my shoulders people's life.
All right, Member Lopez, thank you. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you. I want to clarify, because I don't want anyone in the public to misunderstand either this notion of linking to face-to-face. So what the state requires is that you have seat time. You can't have an innovative plan approved and say you're going to have three hours a day for your students. Your innovative plan has to mirror what would be taking place in the classroom. Does not mean each one of those children is linked to a teacher in the classroom with students. I want to be clear. It means your face-to-face, your innovative plan needs It means your face-to-face, your innovative plan needs to be, need to look similar to what the children would be experiencing in the classroom. What the state in essence is saying, you will not get a plan approved where you say students will have three hours with their teacher a day. Some of our distance learning stipulations that we had in place will not fly in your innovation plan. So I want to make that very clear. Innovation plan needs to mirror, needs to be similar to what the children would experience if they were in place. Number two, want to stress again, that entire PowerPoint that went through all of our local decisions and recommendations around how we can accommodate our children is still available online for anyone who wants to review it. All of those details are in place. Those kind of operational issues, we can keep working on. We can certainly keep improving, taking your input and your budgetary decisions if we want to add additional things to those plans as well. But the plans as we now have them were presented and are online. And I want to speak especially to transportation because we know we can't afford to transport every student that we currently transport without having exorbitant amounts of additional dollars for buses and drivers because you would try to put 12 to 13 on a bus. We know we can't do that. Instead, as is required, we are, we are placing a mandate on masks. So students will have to wear masks on our buses. Again, we will encourage parents, if you can, transport your own children, certainly do that. If you can't, we are required to transport beyond that two-mile perimeter, but we will have our children wearing masks as an extra safety measure because we know we can't have one child every other seat on the bus. Again, once we have a plan approved, part of survey, part of the registration for parents says, do you need transportation? Do you need before and after-school care? What exactly can we count on from you so that we can start to make those plans? And it may very well be in some instances that we don't have full loads of buses, but we won't know until we start having those actual registrations take place. Wearing of the mask in the classrooms with specials and in other areas is also the added safety measure. The state says as much as feasible, as much space as possible between them. As we presented on Tuesday, we will remove extra furniture from classrooms and try to spread seats as far apart as possible, but we are going to require masks as that safety measure for our young people. And, and as I mentioned, the sooner we get past this stage, local schools can start to make more extensive plans, including plans from the special area teachers and how they're going to manage students both in person and through Launch Ed.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
Okay. John?
This is Covert.
Thank you. Member Covert?
Thank you, Chair. All right. The fact is, we need to have a plan in place. We need it now and we need it for when we open our schools brick and mortar. If and when we get to the point where we open brick and mortar and we have an outbreak, that's going to have to flip and shut down, whether it is a classroom, a grade, or a school. You need to have the Launch Ed in place to flip to. Otherwise, the only choices for our parents are Orange County Virtual School and brick and mortar. And if that gets shut down, then what do we do? Our students and our parents want to be tied to their home school and that is what we're trying to provide with Launch Ed. I'm going to just be really honest. I have a serious problem with a bunch of middle-aged men telling us as elected officials, women, professionals, and mothers what to do and how to do it. We know here in Orange County what's best for Orange County. I want as much teacher choice as possible. I do have, and I know the overwhelming majority are worried, have a sick spouse, have a grandparent living with them, have a child who's immunocompromised. But I do have some teachers who have reached out to us and said, I serve very fragile students. I want the choice to be able to come in and serve my students. I feel that I can do it away that's safe for me and safe for them. So I want parents to, teachers to have as much choice as the parents are getting in this situation. So parents having those choices, making those choices for their own families, teachers making those choices, making choices for their own families. It might not all match up. If it doesn't match up, we may need to say, we don't have enough teachers for this, this will have to go virtual. So high school student, you may have to go this many classes virtual and we have this many teachers available by choice or by Launch Ed. So I believe there's a way we can do this, giving as much choice as possible. Like I said, my concern is not having a plan in place for now or for the future. And I resubmit that we approve the Launch Ed plan with the caveat that aligns, that says, face-to-face, five days a week in August, we remove that and say, at the purview or at the discretion of the Orange County School Board. And I say that we copy the governor on our plan. No, we don't have it in writing, but we have him recorded as saying, the DOE cannot mandate, they can recommend. He is recorded saying that. That to me gives us back the discretion to make the decision in our homes and in our county that's best for our people because that's what we're elected to do. Those are the powers that we have. That is my submission, Chair.
Thank you. Excellent. Dr. Gordon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thank the, I thank the gentleman that called in and asked about the, the note that Dr. Jenkins mentioned, that the waiver should be given. The waiver can be given in Orange County. Yes, we need a plan. And Member Coleman, this is not the plan. This is not the plan that would help every child. Distanced learning would have been the plan because we, we, we are giving a number, phase two, but we're sitting in not just phase one, we're top in the world. We're top, we are the highest right now. We are the laughing stock of the world right now because Florida is the highest. Dr. Jenkins mentioned about an innovative plan has to mirror what they do in the classroom. I laugh because I'm a teacher. But then, the reason why I'm hearing, who is monitoring the children at home if we go with this plan? You can't mandate the parent, these parents are working from home, they're running out. Most of my parents say they got to go to work. And I would like to see how we're going to get the mayors, the 13 municipal mayors, but we can't even get them down at the county office when, when, you know what I'm talking about, Chair Jacobs? You've got 13 municipalities and one unincorporated Orange County mayor and you couldn't even get them to speak to all of us as a team. So this is not the plan, school board members. That's all I can tell you. You cannot innovate what you have not legislated or mandated or monitored. This plan has not been monitored in Orange County. Why do you all get the, why do you get the power to believe in this? How can I sell this over to teachers? How can I sell this over to parents and business leaders? These parents are going out to work. I don't know who's monitoring that child at home. And is that child really mirroring what we are doing in the classroom? No, because we have behavior problems. We have children with autism. We have children with all kinds of problems. We have children that get tired like you all about to fall out of your chairs up there now, okay? I know about sitting up there. That's why I chose at my age, I'm not ill, and that was made, I'm not ill. I have no illnesses right now, thank God. I chose because they said anybody 65 and over is in danger, but I'm willing to go back and teach. What does the face-to-face, I would like to ask Dr. Jenkins, what does the face-to-face entails from the state as she understands it? Because this is not the plan for Orange County. You're going to leave out your most challenged students. They don't have those people that's going to do all of these things that you are asking that I have not seen that have been successful. I need her to answer that, Madam Chair. Thank you, the face-to-face.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
As it relates to teachers and parents involved. Most of the parents ask the face-to-face, especially ESC.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Happy to clarify, so face-to-face, brick and mortar, as the state calls it, is your standard school day as we know it. Prior to COVID-19, children would be allowed to come to school five days a week and have a teacher and a live program as we had prior to COVID-19. That is required as one of the options that we provide for our parents.
And I heard there are some teachers that got to go in face-to-face. There are some parents that got to go back to work. We haven't even looked at those. I don't see how you could do any of this. Can you tell me how many, I told you how many I looked up that have applied for Orange County Virtual. Can you tell me how many parents have applied for face-to-face?
No, Dr. Gordon, that is what we will learn once we launch the-
That's why we cannot approve this plan.
This afternoon, you won't know until you launch the actual registration form for teachers as they did in Osceola County and in Seminole County. We don't have those numbers.
I am very well aware of Osceola since I teach over there. So I don't, I don't like being told that. Osceola has kept us well informed of their plan. You know, I know it because I send it back and forth to you. And I don't like that because it makes me feel I'm not aware. I'm very aware of what we're doing over there and I praise them for trying to get something decent. The children of Osceola County. I'm trying for us to vote in something decent for, for the parents and business partners over here in Orange. And everybody's, and every county is different. This, I still say, go back into your drawing board and find out, you don't even have a number of how many parents you left your parents out. And Melanie Williams spoke the other day. Do you tell me I got to be quiet?
Dr. Gordon, it's time.
I'm going to shut right out. Melanie is PTA president. She brought in 15,000 parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Dr. Jenkins, you're actually queued up next.
Must have been an old one, I'm sorry. My last note, I would, I would just, since I have an opportunity, I would just remind everyone, the approval of the innovative plan gives parents a third choice. Parents currently have face-to-face via the executive order and they have Orange County Virtual School, which has increased from around 250 students up to 5,000 registrations, which will make opportunities for our teachers, we know that now, because they're able to register for Orange County Virtual School at any time. We've not asked parents to register or indicate their interest in the Launch Ed innovative option because I'm waiting for the board's approval or go-ahead and that survey, that registration form for parents, including transportation needs, before and after-school care, lunch provisions, all of that will be in a survey as early as this afternoon for our parents. So face-to-face, which is pre-COVID-19 school for children who need it, is required. Launch Ed is your innovative option we'd like to provide for our parents so they're still tied to their local school and their teachers, but at home doing their learning. And then of course, Orange County Virtual School is always available and continues to grow even without our survey.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Vice Chair Gould.
Thank you. Chair Jacobs, you had referred to something that I thought might be a great idea and I would like to lend support since I was thinking of it simultaneously with you. And that is that as we move forward this plan and we start to understand what the parents and families prefer, that we simultaneously survey our teachers to see what their preferences and have another layer of that to find out how many within the guidelines, the CDC guidelines and our guidelines actually have the accommodations between themselves and their home situations with vulnerable people. Because that would give us a good sense of mirroring what holes we will need to fill as we evolve this plan. Again, I have, I, I understand what Member Gordon is saying and, and my fellow board members are saying, it's not the ideal. I prefer that we, we could do something, distance this Launch Ed plan as I started to talk through it with area superintendents yesterday through my community forum where we had about 300 people on. You know, there, it seems to have a little bit better delivery system than we experienced as we shut down schools. The other thing that it delivers is those specialty services, those pullouts, those things to help both our advanced kids and our kids who are struggling or that, that need accommodation to fulfill their IEPs and their 504 plans. So I, it, it doesn't have all of the meat on the bones yet, but we have to put something out to know where our resources can get deployed. So I would be in favor of that simultaneous surveying, I'm putting in quotes, kind of that, that reservation surveying process, along with really seeing where our students need the most help because then we can backfill the plan. I want to respond to everybody's needs, but our first job is to find out what our students need and then do the best of our ability to fulfill each and every student's needs that we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Let's go to Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question that was actually brought up by a teacher. Is there a way where we could start virtually on August 21st? So that we could prepare teachers and kids and make sure our classified teachers are getting the paycheck so that they could secure in the knowledge of when they're going to get paid? And then make August 31st as our back-to-school brick and mortar for our assurances in this innovative plan? Like would we be able to, do we have the flexibility to do something like that? Because we're going to, I mean, we need professional development for our teachers, our classified, we need to get teachers and students on board and up to speed with everything that's going on. So I didn't know if we could do that.
Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Gallo, I do not believe that meets the requirements at the state level. We are certainly happy to look into it. We will, and keep in mind, I can't say often enough, as things change, as flexibility is provided, our plans are fluid. What we know at this point is opening in August, face-to-face is the requirement for any plan submitted. So let's say you want to do something more creative, while it might be discussed, it is certainly going to hold up any discussion, any approval of your plan at this point. So I would recommend all of those additional ideas, creative ideas, we continue to work on, but we get a plan approved for the sake of our own planning at the local school level and for our parents and for our teachers. As I say, my answer at this point is I don't believe you can open virtually. I believe you have to open schools with face-to-face, five-day-a-week, brick and mortar.
Gallo, Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. All right. So I just, I agree with Member Gould about a survey for our teachers. We need to know what we're looking at to see if, how many teachers are even willing to come into the classroom. I know that the chair mentioned before, if we don't have enough to come in, that kind of solves our problems. Our numbers are still way too high. They're over 11,000 for the state of Florida today alone, 702 in, or 720, something like that. 702 in, or 720, something like that, in Orange County. So the trend is upticking. I also agree with what Member Cobert said. I am in agreement. So with that, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. Let's go, Vice Chair Gould, I'm not sure if you meant to or not, but you're queued back up. You're recognized?
I think I was an old queue, but I do have something to add after Dr. Jenkins' statement. We are under the brick-and-order rule because we are, as a county, in Phase 2. If that were to change to Phase 1, I believe we would get the, and John is nodding, we would get the exception to be able to go fully virtual. So we have to keep reminding people how that order is linked to what phase we are under the state phasing rules so that they understand where our abilities lie. I love the idea of asking maybe for an exception for the couple of weeks and kind of working our way into it. I think that's kind of a cool idea. So, thank you.
Mr. Pomerini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to add on to that just very briefly. When I was shaking my head about Phase 1, I just want to make it clear for the board on the legal analysis. That emergency order says we have to open brick-and-mortars subject to the advice of the Florida Department of Health, local departments of health, executive orders of the governor. However, I think we have a very solid legal argument to the extent that the local community puts us back in Phase 1, where we can't have more than 10 people in a room. We would be unable to have education. So from that standpoint, even though it doesn't say the local county governments in that order, if they put us in, let me try that again in English. If they put us under an order that says Phase 1, no more than 10 people in a room, I don't think we can hold school in that case. So that's, I wanted to give the nature of that analysis for the board.
Thank you, John. Just for clarification, the last time, I think, Orange County carved us out. So we also need to include-
That is a very good point, depending on what the emergency, the executive order, moving back to Phase 1, says. I understand.
All right, let's go then, Vice Chair, was that? Did you have any further question on that? I don't think so.
No, I did not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go to Dr. Gordon.
Oh Lord, my God, it's coming around so bad. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I have a question for Dr. Jenkins. We're, you know, our ESC teachers, and as I stated and gave her high praise in the last meeting of how her staff worked extremely hard to get the ESC teachers in. I need to ask this. We really need to survey before we vote on this plan. You all are doing injustice to the students, the parents, and the teachers. This plan, we don't even know if they want it. It's only eight of us deciding for over 213,000 students. These parents gotta go back to work. Disney's gonna open up, everybody's gonna open up. Some of them already told me they can't go back because they closed their, they closed their jobs. So they'll be seeking jobs elsewhere. Now you're putting them in another hardship because of this fancy plan. The more I begin to see it, it becomes fancy. I would like to know why the superintendent did not bring back what we were doing, doing spring break. Why, why did we not? We were doing distant learning. And all we got to do is master that. Did we do it as well as we thought? No, because we had to send the OCPS police out to find the 2,000 children that we don't know where they were. And we thanked the hotel industry, CFL, Center for the Hotel and Lodging for taking in our homeless students. You all, when you bought this in, you are putting in parents in a hardship. You are putting your teachers in a hardship. You're asking us to go out and teach, but you're telling us what the heck we got to teach. And I didn't curse. You're telling me what I gotta do. The state already told us, the big bad wolf told us, take your behind back face-to-face. We satisfied some of those parents and did that. I'm going back face-to-face. But you're not right. You really needed to put the choice in. Why couldn't we? We didn't do that. The only thing that went bad are those seniors that graduated and know they weren't supposed to. And we didn't do that. The state made those recommendations because it was very hard to keep kids. We were in the middle of March. We were getting ready to do our testing. Some of those kids know they shouldn't have graduated. And it's okay because they're going on to become your boss in the future. And your nurses and your doctors and lawyers. So I, I'm not gonna vote for this until I know that the teachers want this, that the parents want this as an option. And I'm asking, I need Dr. Jenkins to ask why she didn't come bring back. We didn't get a lot of complaints on the distant learning like we did. We didn't get any complaints. Why was this not brought back? Why were they not given an opportunity to address it? Did the union didn't want it? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To clarify once again, we could not do the distance learning because the state specifically will not approve an innovative plan that does not mirror bell schedule and class time that would be achieved in face-to-face.
We could make it.
Distance, so distance, so distance learning that we did in the spring does not meet requirements for an approved innovative plan. And on behalf of parents that have to go back to work, those might be some of our parents that would choose the brick-and-mortar option. I understand we have some families that have hardships that need supervision and that need to go back to work. That is why the face-to-face option, it would still be available to them.
And let me just end with one thing, Madam Chair. I've not, I put myself back on and I will gladly yield and come back.
No, go ahead, Dr. Gordon.
Okay, I'm just gonna go. There were several counties that selected distant learning because they were on the Phase 1, okay? I still felt, I still felt that they wrote their own plan. Why couldn't we, Dr. Jenkins, write our own distant learning plan? Help me understand that. Help me understand why we could not have written our own distant learning plan that would mirror what the children do. We know that them kids told us to call them back at 1 o'clock. They worked all night and all day, and some of our kids we had to call back. Okay, we know, I know what went on in that, in that. So help me with that. Why, why did we not write our own innovative distant plan like, like the other counties did? And I think the, didn't you write their own plan?
Time, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins.
This is actually our plan. Launch Ed is the vehicle that we're using. And it gives our teachers the ability to instruct students just like they would in their own classrooms. If they were face-to-face, Launch Ed is a tool that gives them the opportunity, the capability to teach their students like they would if they were in their classroom. Distance learning, just so folks that are listening, keep it clear. Distance learning was sort of a punt, a swivel that we had to do in the spring when some of our students did not have technology available, when we had to hurriedly try to prepare teachers to do some limited instructional time. If you recall, three hours was what we negotiated under distance learning. So Launch Ed gives us the ability to allow classroom teachers to instruct students and match the instructional day as required by the state. That is what our plan entails. Launch Ed is our vehicle. It is one that we are familiar with. Those who've been doing digital learning in various capacities in their schools will be familiar with the platform. Teachers that have been using it in the past. It is just a vehicle to provide a mirrored experience for students who are at home receiving their education from their own classroom teacher, who can use just as much creativity and just as much input, but they have to mirror the instructional day of those students who are in our brick-and-mortar schools. They cannot just have a three-hour presentation or have a limited number of minutes with students each day. It has to mirror or match what children are receiving in the brick-and-mortar. Now, for those who want more flexibility, they'd like to be able to complete courses at home in the evenings or on the weekends or when they're out of town and traveling, what have you. The maximum flexibility for parents and for teachers who are working as well is through Orange County Virtual School. That's the maximum flexibility where nobody's going to be needing to monitor and assure that the instructional minutes are adhered to. You simply have to complete the course within the time period and have those check-ins as Orange County Virtual has had in place for years.
I put myself back on the speaking order. I'm gonna come back. My time was up. Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. I think you're on the speaking order two or three more times already.
Thank you.
So you can recover. Actually, you're up in just a second. So we have Member Vice Chair Gould, and then we have Dr. Gordon again. Vice Chair Gould, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, in the format that we flipped to in the spring, I did get a lot of feedback, and it varied, you know. Some teachers were able to, just because of the way their class structure was, to flip pretty quickly and deliver content in a way that the kids could learn it easily. And others struggled a lot, and I got a lot of those calls with struggling with the model that we had. So I did hear that. I will tell you, based on the emails I've gotten and even our workshop and conversations I had yesterday, I would say that approximately 80% of the people that I've been in contact with, unless they have a special needs student or students that need face-to-face, would be choosing the Launch Ed. They do desire, as we get better, to be able to come back to school as soon as they can, but are, like us, want to take the safest precautions and have that flexibility going into the beginning of the year of staying with the bell schedule. They have been talking amongst themselves, as Member Cobert had talked about, of kind of helping to do the monitoring as they can. And that's not possible for everybody. So I do think that is a hurdle. We are gonna need to partner with our not-for-profits, our local organizations, our churches, and our community partners, as Member Cobert talked about, and, and help support that. There's a lot of skilled people that, that could help support that distance learning and come in in the live way. I have volunteers every week who we're not letting back into the Shepherd's Hope clinics that want to come back. They feel healthy, they are comfortable with the precautions that we've put in place. If we can, one, get the numbers down in the county, and that means everybody, whether you believe in the masks or not, please wear a mask as you go out. Because masks, a mask is the safest thing. And you don't need N95 masks to have that layer. That, there's lots and lots of articles about that. But if you want us to be able to get back to normalcy as fast as we can, please utilize the mask and follow the mayor's guidelines there. That led to one other thing that came up yesterday, which is a little bit more in the weeds, but I think it's important that we talk about today. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, while we did not call out in the Code of Conduct masks, it is a health and safety issue because of the mandate and the rule that we're putting in place about masks. And so that would then fall under the health and safety under the Code of Conduct and, and be handled in a coaching, counseling, and disciplinary way under that code. Could I get that clarified, please?
Yes. Yes, I think we addressed that at our last meeting. But John, can you address that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Gould, yes, it is a health, safety, welfare issue. We are going to require masks for students unless there's a medical necessity that they can't wear. We are going to be making changes to the Code of Conduct that will be coming before you, that will be included in the changes to the Code of Conduct. We will also be bringing an emergency rule the next board meeting, August 11th, for employees, adults, and any visitors to the schools, that they will be required to wear masks as well. So this will be in front of the board on, in numerous different ways in order to ensure that the rules are in place, and we will handle it under the Code of Conduct. If a student is medically able to wear a mask and they refuse, it will be handled like any other insubordination issue under the Code of Conduct.
Thank you for clarifying that. That, I've gotten that from a lot of teachers and parents who worried about others' behaviors and not following the rules. I would suggest that you don't just talk about masks, but PPE in general because it could include, you know, in some situations where we need gloves or shields or one other or both, or all three. So that's my last two cents on that. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, let's go back to Dr. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Now, at first, I didn't understand when the motion came on the floor to move to Friday, but I have to love whose great idea that was. I don't know whose idea it was. And I was ready to vote. I was ready to vote. But I have so much more information, and I thank who that was. So knowing that in mind, with everybody listening to us today, my hearing all of my colleagues, I feel, I asked Dr. Jenkins when this plan has to be in, okay? But I think now we need to involve the stakeholders. I learned in my doctoral class a sense of urgency. And when you are voting on something this important and the big bad wolves up in Tallahassee in number 45 put this on us, I think we need to put it on our parents, our teachers, and even find out from the business partners and community. Because I just found out a minute ago that, I just found out a minute ago that, that the mayor of, unincorporated Orange County, Disney probably don't want him to go to Phase 1. So with that in mind, how about we stand with maybe, you know, CTA president came and spoke that night. You didn't know it, but it was Melanie Williams. She was very, very powerful. And she had 15,000 parents with her. And you really haven't gotten a good count. I would rather go down dying with over 15,000-plus parents, 23,000 school employees, with the business community, including Disney and all of them voting, bless your heart, than go with eight right now since we are where we are because they pushing it all on us. And if any child die, they're not gonna look at the parents and Disney and, and the teachers, they're gonna look at us. They're gonna look at us. So what I'm gonna ask you is to, let's see if we can get the survey out and reconvene on Tuesday. And I don't have to make that motion, y'all. I don't know who came up with that motion, but it was awesome to come on Friday. Then I don't know how y'all came up with 9 o'clock. In my 20 years on this board, we've never met at 9 for a meeting of this nature. We've never met at 12 for a meeting of this nature. So that was unique. So I'm gonna ask you to use whoever technique that was to go ahead and let the public, those involved in Orange County Public School, dealing with the children, let them see. If they come back and tell us they want this plan, then there are dirty rules. And I'd be done if I'm going down with eight bodies sitting up on the platform up there. I can't do that to my life. So I'm going to have to ask whoever made that motion. I would like to see us come back Tuesday because the General Counsel, the acting General Counsel, John Pomerini, just told us that August 11th. So if we did this, we need to let the parents vote, let the teachers vote, let the parents vote. We are a collective bargaining agent in a non-right-to-work state. So I think if we're gonna, we know that the virus is killing people. We know that we were in Phase 1. I showed you three slides that will follow you to your grave. And all I ask now is that we turn the voice over and let, let them promote the survey. They have a right because they're the ones gonna be executing it. The parents and the teachers and those businesses gotta get these parents back to work. That way, the governor will be satisfied. Number 45- Number forty-five will be satisfied. And then number forty-five need to give money to those businesses that oppose for lack of leadership in that part and allowing those businesses to close and giving money to businesses that didn't even need it. So my plan is, and if I need to make a motion, I will move that we reconvene on whatever date, that the chair and the superintendent formulate, and that we get that survey out today and allow these parents to do like Osceola County did. And let them select what plan they want. And boy, we don't know how many teachers. And I have something on there to say, I'm a parent, I'm a teacher, I'm a bus driver. We got to deal with the people. These are our stakeholders. You cannot plan without your major stakeholders. They got to have a say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I get clarification? I believe Osceola County put out their survey after they had a plan for parents to choose from. So if we're modeling Osceola, I believe that takes an approval of the plan and then putting out the information for individuals to indicate their preference.
Sorry, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let me, I believe I was the first person to suggest that we need a commitment from our parents and we need a survey of our teachers and that we postpone the meeting that we were having the other night because we had a malfunction in the technology. Somehow, we lost both of our board members that were calling in. So we continued this for discussion and decision only. So when I'm queued up, I will explain what the thinking was behind getting a commitment from our parents. Let's go to Dr. Kestrel Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just talk about the actual language in the innovative plan that we are submitting. So we're asked to approve and submit the Launch Ed program for our students. But again, in that plan, the state is asking for assurances that in addition to the Launch Ed, that we are going to open brick-and-mortar schools. So I just want to read that language in here to make it clear for everyone who's listening. It says, describe the August, describe the reopening in August of brick-and-mortar schools reflecting at least five days of school per week for all students subject to advice and orders of the Florida Department of Health, local departments of health, as we've heard. So this is what our district has proposed. OCPS is committed to ensuring every student has a promising and successful future, including access to high-quality, technology-enhanced, face-to-face instruction in brick-and-mortar schools. All families will have the ability to choose the face-to-face model of instruction if desired. Schools will open for students at all schools on August 21st, 2020. Teacher pre-planning will begin August 13th, 2020. So that's the language that's in our plan. So, but I'm hearing that that some members want to go ahead and submit that plan, saying that we will go ahead and open our school buildings on August 21st. But when that date arrives and things have not yet improved, we haven't written anything else in there to give us any more leeway. What happens if things have not improved? What will we do? By getting this plan approved, as it's written, we are locked in to opening up our brick-and-mortar schools. Or is that the time when we defy the order? Do we say, sorry, things have not improved, or they've gotten worse? We are not going to open our schools. So are we, in a sense, tricking the department into approving it so that down the road, we can then pull back our agreement, our assurance? Or, you know, who gets to decide that? If we submit this plan, then we are locking ourselves into opening up the brick-and-mortar schools on August 21st. So I don't see us getting any guidance from the Health Department to change. I don't see that our phases changing. I just want to know, what is the plan? Because as it's written, assuring that we will open up our schools, I still cannot support this plan.
Dr. Kestrel Dental, let me, since I threw out one option and Member Cobert threw out another, let us respond to that question. My suggestion was that we approve the plan. My reasoning was, if we don't approve the plan, the only options parents have is brick-and-mortar and virtual schools, or virtual school. And if thirty percent choose virtual schools, we lay off over a thousand teachers. If sixty percent choose virtual schools, we lay off two thousand teachers. And I don't think virtual school is as good an option as Launch Ed. So I suggested that we submit the plan, but we send a letter to the governor and to Commissioner Corcoran. We express that we are submitting it, I would say, under threat of significant loss of funding, but that we believe there are significant concerns about the safety and welfare of our students and our teachers under this proposal to open brick-and-mortar. We lay out all of our reasons. We document that the governor has indicated there should be local control over these decisions, and we don't think that order is consistent. And we appeal to him and to Corcoran to lift the requirement that we open brick-and-mortar full-time five days a week. Meanwhile, we seek to create a way to provide accommodations to those students who need to come into the classroom for education. That was my suggestion. So we are not lying, misleading, or deceiving anybody. We are submitting it, but we are simultaneously communicating our serious concerns while working on an alternative for our most vulnerable students. Member Cobert had a slightly different approach. Let me turn to Member Cobert now. Member Cobert, you're recognized.
And my suggestion was similar, in that we submit the plan to execute Launch Ed so that we have that third choice for parents. But in mine, we attach a waiver to the requirement of the DOE and submit that we will make the decision to open brick-and-mortar schools as we see fit under the guidance of local medical professionals. We can put together that team of medical professionals. We have world-class doctors at Nemours, Adventist Health, Orlando Health. I realize that this does not meet the guidance of the order, but I reiterate that the governor made the statement that it is a local decision based on guidance from local medical professionals. So I believe that is the change that would allow us to submit this plan with that waiver. Launch Ed is our ability to pivot when we open. I know how many people want to go back to school. Face-to-face in a classroom with the teacher is the number-one option. My daughter wants to go back to school. We just have to do it in a way that is safe. And if we were to submit our plan in that way, copying the governor, citing his own words, with thousands of letters and emails from the public saying, this is what we want in Orange County. This is what we want. The public needs to hold hands and advocate along with us. The teachers need to hold hands and advocate along with us that this is the plan that we want. So again, it would be submitting the plan, asserting our right to make the decision. We're not saying we're not going to open if our numbers come down, but we make that decision when it's safe to open our schools, along with our community, medical professionals, our teachers, et cetera. I think that sums it up. And one last comment about middle-aged men. I'm married to one, love him very much, but he would never do what the authorities in Tallahassee have done. That's all I want to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Kestrel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Member Cobert. And I appreciate.
Madam Chair, the time ran out during the answers for Dr. Kestrel Dental. So either she has to re-queue or if you want to give her a couple extra minutes in consideration.
I'll get back in the queue.
Thank you, Member Kestrel Dental. Member Lopez.
I highly appreciate. I'm not hearing myself. You hear me. I highly appreciate School Board Member Cobert for her idea, her recommendation. After I listened to school board members and having this conversation and also the clarification from Dr. Jenkins about saying that Launch Ed is not linked to the face-to-face education, I think that parents deserve another choice. And I heard a lot of parents saying that Launch Ed is something that fits to them. They are very concerned about the schedule still, and I have to say that, to voice that concern as well. I think that we can make arrangements in the future about that. I believe that the majority of my school board members are saying the same thing about the face-to-face education. I believe that all of us are very concerned about the numbers that are increasing in central Florida. And I believe that parents deserve choices. But I also believe that our teachers and employees and classified employees also deserve to be heard. But if we're going to have that wave, and we agree on that, I think that is a great idea. I just want to say that, based on what I said before, no to Launch Ed now. I'm more clear on something that we can do to provide more options, but at the same way, protect the life of our employees and our students. Thank you so much to School Board Member Lynn Dacover for her opinion and her recommendation.
Thank you, Member Lopez. Let's go to Member Bird.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want a Launch Ed option for our parents. I've heard from many parents that want this option. I do have a concern, like Member Lopez said, about the flexibility issue. I know that we have decided that Launch Ed would be one hundred percent at home, which, for right now, with our numbers and everything, is the way I would want it. But I guess what you're saying, Dr. Jenkins, is that at a later time, we could, if we're ready to open schools, we could allow students the option to do some classes in person. So that's good. I said on Tuesday night that I would suggest approving this plan with a statement to the governor and to the commissioner that we do not feel comfortable at this time committing to opening the schools. I still think that that's what we need to do, because we do need to have this Launch Ed option approved. Like Member Cobert said, if we were later down the road to open up our doors and there was some huge spike and we had to shut again, we need to have something to fall back on that's already approved and ready to go. So I stand by what I said the other night, that I think we should approve this with a, whatever has the best chance of getting it approved, if that's a waiver or a letter, I don't care. But what I do care about is that I want to make sure that we are assured, like what Member Kestrel Dental said, that we're not bound to this language that says all families will have the ability to choose face-to-face model of instruction. Schools will open on August 21st. That still makes me nervous that that's in there, and I understand we can't take it out and get it approved. So I'm willing to try to get it approved as long as I have some assurance from my board that we are not going to stand by and allow our schools to open if our numbers look the way they look come August 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bird. I believe, yes, we are, Member Vice Chair Gould.
So I also want those same assurances that we have that flexibility to respond to the needs of our community, our students, and all of our staff. So I'm in favor of that, but I do think we have to get something nailed down. I want to, I so appreciate the numbers that Board Member Gordon put forward from the World Health Organization from a few days ago. But I wanted to make sure that everybody had the local numbers as well. So out of 1.393 million people, we've had just over 21,000 people test positive as of yesterday in Orange County. Almost three hundred, I think it was three hundred and thirty-four of those were people from outside of our county that were not in residence. So 20,965 were residents. We have sadly had 101 deaths out of that total. As you remember from Dr. Pino's presentation, we are seeing a higher rate of positives in a younger population than in other areas, which is why, thankfully, knock on wood, our death rate is less than we see in South Florida, especially in some other locations. I just put that information out there to make sure everybody has the same data, not as an assuasion of one thing or another, but we shouldn't be governing off of global statistics or statewide statistics. We should be governing off of local data and what's happening in our county, which I think we are, but those stats are important to understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gould. Let's go to Member Gala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with, I think, the majority of our board members that we have to get a plan approved and that we need assurances that, even though we're approving this plan, that we aren't guaranteeing or committing to starting school in August if the numbers are still high. That's extremely important. I am curious about two things. One is, and maybe Dr. Pino mentioned this on Tuesday when he came in and talked to us a week ago. What is he saying about the consequences with regard to transmission and the possibility of closing after opening if we see increased numbers? Like, did he give us an idea if we go back to school and we immediately see an increase and we'll have to shut down, and how soon he thinks we would see an increase?
I'm sorry, Member Gala. No, I'm quite certain he did not give us a projection.
Has he given one to any of the staff at OCPS?
Dr. Jenkins?
I would never presume to speak on his behalf.
No, I think the question is, has he given you a projection that?
No.
Okay, thank you. As far as brick-and-mortar buildings go, do we have the supplies in place to open the schools? And will we be providing all the supplies needed to disinfect and clean the school so that parents don't have to provide them, including masks? Like, who's providing the masks?
Jenkins, you're recognized.
We have used some of our carers' money. We have ordered lots of materials and supplies. We believe we will be sufficient. It will become more clear once parents do their registration process and we know what numbers we're dealing with for brick-and-mortar.
Member Gala?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so this is where I'm at again. And this is the last time I'm going to say it. I think we need to approve the Launch Ed so that we can give our teachers and our parents a choice. parents a choice. We need to find out where we are in the community, how many kids may want to come back to school, how many teachers can't come back to the classroom, so we know what we're doing. So I will vote to approve the plan today. However, as I stated before, I'm not committing to open the brick-and-mortar in August. And I'm only going to vote yes on this plan because I feel like my fellow Board Members are in the same thought process as I am. So that makes me feel better. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gala. Let's go to Dr. Gordon.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. I need to ask a question of the Chair. Is there a reason why I stated earlier that you all came up with the idea to do this meeting, which I had no knowledge of, that I have to give you? It's a brilliant idea because look how much information we've gained. Why can't we not survey the parents, the teachers, the instructional and non-instructional staff? Get the survey out. Dr. Jenkins and her staff, burn the rubber. Get a good survey out, not the one she already probably got ready to roll. I haven't seen that one real good, okay? I would want to be able to let the parents vote. I'm sorry, Madam Cobert says, why? This is what we want. No, if only eight people wanted, voted, that's what the eight people wanted. And those of us who may lose the vote gotta go along with y'all. I'm glad I'm leaving. So if anything happened, I don't want to be held responsible for anything. At least if we, I am a believer with a plan like this. If you want it to work, you better get the workaholics behind it. And your workaholics are your non-instructional instructional teachers. Your workaholics are your grandparents, your great-great-grandparents, your uncles and your aunts, the guardians that are taking care of those kids at home, and your teachers and those parents that gotta do everything. I'm asking you, and I won't ask again. Please do not approve this today. Bring it back Sunday. Give them tonight, give them tomorrow, give them Monday, give them Tuesday. At least let the majority of them vote. Make a mechanism. Taxation without representation. These people, all of us names that I call pay taxes to this School Board. And in a case like this, with this being such an emergency, parents have got to vote. Teachers have got to vote. Parents have got to vote. And if you vote today, wear your mask or not.
Okay, Dr. Gordon. Dr. Jenkins has asked to be recognized. Go ahead, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Want to clarify again that we have not been deaf to input from our community. In fact, I think we have exceeded any other local district in gathering feedback from our community. 4,000 ideas submitted, over 88,000 parents and over 20,000 employees when we first surveyed. I understand that was prior to significant changes in our local data, but this Board and this administration have been very committed to input. Here's the thing. If we are trying to mirror that input, then as they did in Osceola and Seminole, you have a plan and then you let your parents decide and show you where their choices land. That will help you plan for your, and then you let your teachers as well indicate their preferences based on the three options that are available. Now, I realize it may seem difficult, but if you just purely vote and it still doesn't meet the state's requirements, you are back at square one for getting a third option approved. And so as other counties did, I would still recommend you have an approved plan. And immediately this afternoon, we start letting our parents indicate where their choices lie and our teachers indicate where their preferences lie as well. And then we can move forward with our actual planning at the school level. The governance of this Board is representative of your constituents. I am well aware of constituents that you represent that could purely accumulate a vote of the masses for a decision that the state has already given you a template and required guidelines to match. If you're going to have that third option approved, may just delay the inevitable. I would submit again, in Seminole County, where they approved their plan and immediately got the information out to their community, 70% chose to stay at home. That makes a very easy pathway, a runway for them to help plan and accommodate those preferences, both of employees and of their families.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. We are out of time. We are going to, I don't mean for the meeting, but we are at over three hours. Let's take a 15-minute, 10-minute break, 10-minute break. Everybody agree to that? 10-minute break. We'll be back here at, that'd be 12:15 on that clock. 12:15-ish. Thank you.
Uh, recess, everyone. I have been informed that we have increased our subscribers by 3,000 on our YouTube channel. So I'm going to put in another shameless plug for our deaf and hardened hearing of deaf and hardened here. I can say this deaf and hard of hearing that if we get to 10,000 subscribers, YouTube will provide us with free closed captioning. So if you're watching, please click on the subscribe. I think I can say this, I don't think you ever have to watch again, but we need to get up to 10,000. So help us out and thanks for your support through this. All right, um, we are back. Um, we are still under board discussion and I am actually queued up next. And I had a question. Um, primarily it just, I have a question. Let me start with member Cobert. I want to make sure I'm understanding. Your idea of we would submit the plan with the launch ed. So that that would remain funded option with full FTE. And then you mentioned a waiver and I wanted to understand a little bit better the waiver. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, what I would like to do is submit to the state to approve our launch ed plan. For all the reasons we already talked about. And then I would like to also submit a waiver to allow the decision to open our brick and mortar schools to be a local decision based on our data in Orange County and with guidance from the medical community.
Okay, so the waiver, and I think you'd also mention including reference to the governor's statements about local control.
Yes, I would reference the governor's statements on local control. I would attach local data and local medical recommendations. And I believe firmly that other counties will follow our lead. I really do in speaking with school board members all over the state yesterday. They're looking to us for leadership. I believe that they would follow our lead and I need everyone to remember. Are these plans ideal? No, we're in a pandemic, but they are temporary. This gives us a path back to normalcy, which is what everyone wants. And I, I do have to disagree with my fellow board member that another survey is not going to help us. We cannot delay. If we get this in place, we can immediately survey our parents and ask them to register their intent and survey our teachers on their preference.
All right, thank you. Let me check with our general counsel in terms of that approach and our, uh, and Dr. Jenkins. And I also wanted to make sure I think that part of this was also for us to develop a plan also for how we would provide for our students that may need to have launch ed somewhere other than their home. And I think that part we have to work through as a body a little bit further, but we can do that after we get this plan approved. And let me go to Mr. Palmerini or Dr. Jenkins in terms of whether we can do that and submit a waiver with it. Go ahead, Dr. Uh, Mr. Palmerini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the extent we're going to ask for a waiver, I would be worried about doing it in the actual plan that we submit up there. Because if we submit the waiver in the actual plan, they may turn around and reject it. I would rather ask in a separate correspondence for that waiver. So all they have to consider in the plan itself is we've made the commitment to the assurance. And yet we are also asking for a waiver on the other end. I'm just if you ask for the waiver in the actual plan, they will say it's not compliant and reject it on that basis.
Thank you, Madam. Jenkins, I was trying to tell you both of you had your mics on at the same time. So John, if, if you have yours on, turn it off. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would concur. I am very comfortable with parallel paths going at the same time. So we do not delay any further that we submit our plan that we know will be approved because it meets the assurances. And then that we also submit a document to the governor, to the commissioner, asking for a waiver, asking for, uh, local control, asking for whatever flexibility we have, uh, we feel we are in need of. That being done, then we are not prohibited from moving forward with both our teachers and our parents having that third choice. Nothing is in concrete. Nothing prohibits this board from taking action in the future. But I strongly support and encourage that parallel path for seeking out some accommodation, some waiver, while we also submit that plan that meets the requirements of the state so we can move forward.
So, um, I'm on my time and almost out of time. I see member Cobert, you're recognized next anyway. So, um, I'm going to, um, recognize you to respond back and to determine if you want to offer a motion. Member Cobert.
So I would not submit the waiver as a request. I would submit the waiver as an insistence, a little nicer word than a demand. But that we insist on local control. We insist on the purview to determine the safety of reopening our schools here ourselves. Should we see this sharp decline? We're ready to go. Our kids want to be back. Our families want to be back, but we just want to make sure that we do it in a safe way. So I move that we submit the launch ed plan to the state for approval. Simultaneously submit a waiver of the requirement for five days a week in person in August, that we reserve the right to make that decision locally here, that we attach the data, that we attach, uh, statements by local medical experts. We do that immediately and then release the preference for teachers and the register of intent for students. That is my motion, Chair.
All right, thank you. If I can ask a clarifying question, if we do that and we're releasing our, um, intent of registration with our parents, is that including face to face?
So I think you want to see how many parents need that.
Okay.
Because there are the ones like we discussed who really need, who really want that. I want to know what that intent is. What's the intent to come back? Is that 20%? Is that 30%? Let's, let's see what it is. And then again, all of this, this plan is just fluid. It's not ideal, but it's temporary. But we need to know where our parents and our teachers are at.
Okay, so just to clarify the motion, it would be submitting this plan. It would be contingent upon us receiving a waiver, but we would survey our parents on all three so that we knew what the demand from our, then when I use the word demand, I mean supply and demand. The need was from our parents while we likewise survey our teachers to determine the needs of our teacher. Okay.
Yeah, we need to get going.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So we have a motion from, um, member Cobert. We have a second from member Gala. And member Cobert, we are into your time down. Do you want to comment further?
Now, I feel strongly that this is the path that we need to take to bring our community back to normalcy in a safe way. I reiterate, this is not ideal. We're in a pandemic. We're doing the best we can and taking all interests in, in mind. What is best for our children? What is best for our families? What is best for our teachers? And I believe that that is what the people elected us to do. And we are exercising our right as constitutional officers to make those decisions for our community, to keep them safe and our number one job to educate the children. Let's find a way to continue teaching and learning in a way that's safe. And I would call for a vote on the motion.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Are you calling the question?
I, I'm calling for a vote on the motion because we have a motion and a second, right?
We do, so you're calling the question. So we have to vote on calling the question. Yeah, you can't just, you can't just suspend discussion or debate on a question. If you want to call the question, that means you want to cut off all further discussion by the board. And if you do that, we have to take a vote on suspending any further discussion of the motion by the board.
Oh, I have no issue with further discussion.
On the motion. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, um, let's go then to member Gold. Vice Chair Gold, you're recognized.
I think that was an old cue for me. I am in support of the motion that, um, that member Cobert just made.
Thank you so much. Let's go to member Gordon, Dr. Gordon.
Madam Chair, I cannot be in support of that. That puts us right back under the big bad wolves, the governor's, uh, plan. I still don't know why Dr. Jenkins, this report, I talked to several other school board members during the break and they said that this plan is not due until, uh, July 31st. I still, some of my parents want this plan. I love what them, um, a member Cobert said earlier. We, we can, we're not delaying the plan. The plan is not due until July 31st. Why can't we not let the parents and your instructional and non-instructional staff vote? I heard Dr. Jenkins said she wants this plan. She said if this, if this board wants to submit it, she would be more than happy to take her to Tallahassee. We will even fly her there on the day. I don't see why you're going to go with eight people. You're not, you're not going to get 100% because I will be against it. Okay? And the reason why I would be against it, because I didn't hear from the majority of the parents in this county. Channel nine asked you, Greg Monmouth asked you, you did your survey in May. Why didn't you come back? I asked you because I'm, I'm a person that I want to hear from more than us. That's why we did those days and, and tried to talk to parents all night long. I don't see why you cannot get, I would rather walk into Tallahassee and you said you would be more than happy to do so. I would rather see you go with 5,000 plus parents behind you with this plan, with no waiver, no nothing, just this plan. We go ahead and let the board try to work it, but at least it's an option. It is an option. I think they ought to be able to vote. The teachers have not voted on this plan. They're going to be carrying out launch head. I think it's some in the house, some in the class. Are you going to pay them office? You, my house is set up like an office right now and I got a beautiful office up there on the ninth floor. But my whole place is throwing up paper here, paper there, utilizing my home. I mean, what, what I'm saying is why not vote? I would rather go with thousands of parents and teachers backing than to go with just a few board members divided. This is too great to be divided, but I can't support that because we are not late. We can delay, Dr. Jenkins. We can delay it until you get flown into Tallahassee on July 31st. The day is the 17th. I can almost walk to Tallahassee by that time. I have nothing else to say. I would not be supporting that motion. I would be supporting where Dr. Jenkins figure out a way that teachers and, and instructional and non-instructional and parents can vote on that. That's the motion. I didn't make it. You all came up with other motions the other night and it's apparent that you don't want to make it. I, I'm not going to make it because you don't speak to it, but I'm letting you know you're not getting the majority of your parents behind you. And that's bad when you talk about stakeholders, something that's important and don't give them a say. They probably going to go with it. They've been calling some, I, you know, they're giving their opinion. But if I'm pushing a plan like this that you believe that you might make work, you ain't going to make nothing work if you're paraprofessional and teachers and parents are not supporting it. Thank you, Madam Chair. I enjoyed that.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, or Dr. Gordon. So, um, I actually happen to be queued up next. Let me just, um, for the benefit of the public, just address a few things. Based on this motion, what would happen is we would, we would submit three plans, three different options to the state. We're asking for a waiver to be able to decide on the face to face based on our local conditions and recommendations from our local health officials. And we will be surveying our parents. We will be surveying our teachers. We can't go out, we can, but we're not inclined to go out with a survey without having agreed on what we're asking the state for and what we're surveying the parents. So we're starting with what the options are that we think we can facilitate and then we will be serving. I want to make sure that our parents, our teachers and everybody who is watching is not confused. We will be surveying what the needs of our teachers and our families are. And we are also asking for a waiver from the state's requirement that we have to open in August because based on the medical and health conditions here locally, that may not be the right decision. The decision of whether or not we're opening in August is not being made today. The decision that we are contemplating voting on is are we going to insist that we have that local control here to make that decision? And that decision will also be guided by the surveys we get back. So I don't, I don't, I think our intent is lined up. Let me, but you know, we will see in a few minutes when we take a vote. Let me go next, um, back to Dr. Gordon. You're recognized next, Dr. Gordon.
Oh, no, I love you.
Okay, I love you too.
I've already given you my vote.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of this.
I understand. I completely understand. Thank you. Let's go.
I feel that we have time to fly Dr. Jenkins first class to Tallahassee.
Okay. Thank you. Member, uh, Gordon or Gold, you're recognized next. Member Gold, anything further on this?
No, again, I think that was a just kind of an old cue.
Thank you.
Because for a while my chat didn't populate and I think I thought I wasn't in and I probably put it in twice.
No problem. Member Castor Denna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate that there is an effort to make a request of the commissioner to waive their requirement. But unless the language, um, is removed from the, um, launch ed plan that we're submitting, I, I just, I can't support it. I don't feel comfortable submitting a plan that says that we are assuring that we will open face to face. And I, I just don't think that the waiver, um, that I mean, they, the state can still reject the waiver and approve the plan. And then we are faced with committing to sending our kids to school and forcing our employees back to, uh, into harms way. So, um, I'm not so, I mean, I'm hopeful that the, the state would accept our request for local control, but that's not been their tendency unless things change. Pardon me. So I, I cannot support this. I support the letter, but I cannot support, uh, moving forward with, um, the launch ed plan with that contingency that we do face to face. I just feel like we will be bound by that language and they will reject the waiver. I just feel like we will be bound by that language, and they will reject the waiver.
Thank you, Member Castor Dental. Let me clarify. What Member Colbert is suggesting is not a letter, and it's, it is an addendum to the document that says that our support is contingent upon us receiving a waiver. I do not know if there's any chance in the world that that's going to be approved, quite honestly. But I think it's worth a try. I think it probably gets rejected because it says unequivocally, "We support this contingent upon you giving us a waiver." Does that make you feel any better or not? Member Castor Dental.
That does make me feel better. But I guess I would have to see the actual letter that we add, the addendum.
Okay. All right. We are actually under my time, and that's all I had to share. Let's go to Dr. Gordon again.
Move on.
Okay. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Lopez, we're having a problem with your headphones. Can we switch out her headphones?
You hear me now?
No. Dr. Jenkins. Dr. Jenkins, can you? I wanted you to know, Dr. Jenkins, earlier, when I told you we were having problems with your headphones, that's what it sounded like. I think it might be as the batteries are wearing.
Do you hear me now?
Oh, much better. Thank you, Member Lopez. You're recognized. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What can I say? I want to be clear that I tried to make those questions before, and I was clarified by Dr. Jenkins that it's not attached to the face-to-face. So now I still have, I'm so sorry about this, but can I ask you again, Dr. Jenkins, that is not a link with the launch ed and to the face-to-face option?
Launch ed and face-to-face are two separate choices our parents can make. All that is in your request to the state and your plan to the state is your innovative launch ed program, which has to mirror the actual instructional time that you have in your face-to-face.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And when we, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
There was another point I'll wait.
So when we are voting about launch ed, the next step is that we're going to, because we still have conversations or like the, for example, delay the date of the school, of the first day of school, or this is part of the, or we're voting for everything at the same time of the agenda or only for this part of launch ed.
So what is included in the plan includes the contingencies, the requirements, the assurances that are demanded by the state in order to gain approval. And one of those assurances is that you're going to start school face-to-face in August. What I heard Member Colbert propose is that we both, Member Lopez, we both submit our approval of the plan and a request for certain stipulations around this board, being able to take control of the actual start date pending local data. I believe we'll have parallel pathways that go to the state to see how they respond.
Okay. So the start time is not going to be affected if we choose a later date? The teachers are not going to be affected by that to receive the salary? You know, later than the day that they usually receive the salaries?
Now, what's in place now actually pushes back. Can you, I'm getting an echo.
I cannot hear from here. I just have to.
Okay. So what we're putting in place actually, and I need to clarify because I believe it was Member Castor Dental mentioned it earlier. There is no reference to teacher pre-planning in the document online. That is one of the things that we also took out because based on collective bargaining, we could eventually have either of our, either or both of our employee groups come back sooner. And so that does not need to be a part of the plan. It is simply that you need to stick a pin in what you are planning for a start date. It's not in concrete. I do not believe it means you cannot have any further discussion or adjustment in the future. At this point, today, at this point, we are using that as our start date. At the same time, Member Lopez, I believe what Member Colbert recommended is that we submit a request to the state that they give back to us here locally, to this board, the ability to determine the actual starting time based on local data. If the waiver is turned down, I do not believe that means you're still locked into concrete. This board can certainly take action after that point. If they see a need to do so, they may take that action. And whatever consequences are, we will just have to deal with. But this board does not have to feel they're locked in because you have a tentative plan going forward with the August 21st start date on it, while simultaneously you ask for a waiver, a consideration that the local board would determine that start date. I believe this board, when it convenes, can make a motion, and if they have the majority of the board's support, they can certainly make changes as we move along this pathway. It is not in concrete. It does not put you in an untenable situation that you could not adjust in the future. It simply gives you that third option for your parents and your teachers as of today.
Perfect. And just for clarification, if I vote for launch ed, I'm not voting for open the schools face-to-face. I think that is a great risk, a huge risk for our community and our families. But I believe that our parents and our students deserve also choices. At the same time, our teachers as well. So thank you so much for your time and for the explanation.
So that, so that conundrum, if I just may, that conundrum, that problem is what we are trying to settle by submitting the request, the separate, the separate letter and request at the same time that we present our innovative plan. The innovative plan, Member Lopez, so we're clear. The innovative plan requires that you submit that August start date for face-to-face. The way we're trying to deal with the same dichotomy that you are talking about is by also submitting along parallel course the request for the exception and the movement of that power back to the local board.
Got it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some clarifying questions before I can vote. You, you're going to send out the survey after we approve this asking for intent to register for face-to-face. I'm assuming we are going to put some language in there that the board is demanding the state allow us to be in control of face-to-face. In other words, letting parents know that we, that we are not saying that face-to-face is definitely going to be an option, but that we're trying to find out who would need it and that there will also be language that will, that kind of says, you know, is it, you know, is this a need-based, do you need face-to-face? Dr. Jenkins?
Absolutely. We can include that specific language. And I will certainly get a hard copy because we can amend that survey any way we want to. But you make an excellent point. We would need to say for face-to-face, this is a tentative start date. The board is seeking an ability to amend that start date if we have to. And we will also have in that survey that we encourage, we strongly encourage every parent who can to select the launch ed option because we believe that is going to be the safest version for our students and for our teachers. And so we will put that in the actual language and in the Connect Orange message as well. So everyone is clear. The plan is fluid. It is not in concrete. We absolutely can include. I know we've already had language drafted that says encourage to select launch ed. We will include that the face-to-face only has a tentative date. The board is seeking authority over the actual start date.
Okay. Also, as far as the delay of the start date to August 21st, is, you said that's a requirement we have to put in the plan? Okay. But we don't have anything in there as far as when we do pre-planning. So it's, could still be an option through bargaining to allow teachers to come back earlier than the 13th in an effort to keep them receiving a paycheck. I'm concerned, I'm not in support of delaying if it means that our teachers aren't going to have to miss a paycheck.
That is correct, Member Bird. Some things have to go through collective bargaining. What I believe they determined in a neighboring county is that they would move some of their professional development days forward in the calendar so they could have teachers starting sooner. I believe it's maybe in two of our neighbors so that teachers can start sooner rather than later. And they simply shifted some dates in the calendar that were supposed to be teacher workdays or planning days. I believe that's my understanding. But those kinds of discussions on how we can move forward, pre-planning, and pre-planning is not required to be in your submission to the state. So that kind of discussion around how you can pay for and accommodate earlier reporting period for our teachers is something that is outside of the plan, but certainly will be discussed in collective bargaining with both of our unions.
I'm sorry. Can anyone hear me? My sound, oh, got it back? Okay. Yeah. My headset is, it's delayed. Oh, now it's back.
Do we have another headset?
Is that okay?
It is now.
Okay. I'm going to keep going then. Real quick. The other question I have is the semester commitment. Is that something that we have to? I have a lot of people concerned about that. A lot of parents concerned about having to make a semester commitment. Is that something we can address? Or is that something that's required in this plan that we have in here or what?
It's required in the plan. Certainly, we can try to make adjustments as we see changes in our local community, but it's required in the plan at this point.
That parents make a commitment for a semester?
It is a one semester selection, yes.
Okay. But I'm assuming if we open schools at some point and if launch ed wasn't working for students, that parents could make an adjustment.
So that's great clarification. I'm glad you asked that. So what the plan says is that you will do progress monitoring, that you will provide additional support. And if children are struggling in that platform, there ought to be efforts made on an individual basis to adjust and best serve those individuals. And so there is a provision in the description provided to us by the state. Not that we would have constant movement between the plans because once again, you have issues with contamination of cohorts. And you also, I think it would almost, I think it would be unfair to teachers if they have students that are going in and out of the various platforms. But if there are individual needs, they have addressed and accommodated that is specifically noted in what the state expects.
Miss, Member Bird, the five minutes is up. But just so you know, you're queued up like two more times. So if you have additional questions, we'll come back to you in a minute, okay? All right, thank you. Turn your mic off if you could, your speaker or whatever, mic. You're off. Oh, thank you. Okay. Member Gordon, you're recognized again. I'm not sure if you want to be, but you are.
Sorry, Madam Chair. You called my name again.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're actually queued up again. So I wasn't sure.
I was. I was. But I know we have a motion on the floor, but we have gone into debate on some of the questions, and we've gone into selling on some of the questions. So I'm just confused of where we are. We are in, we are in debate on some, and we are in question mode. So maybe that motion shouldn't have come to the floor because we weren't ready to receive it. So I don't know if you want to proceed with it or we were all still queued up. That's the queue-up from the last time the person put the motion on the floor. So I don't know where you want to go from this moment, but we are in debating mood. And once the motion is on the floor, we shouldn't be in debate. We need to express where we want to go with it. And unless the maker of the motion wants to remove it and let us go back into question because it sounds as if my colleagues still have some very serious questions that they need answering. And I'm sure all of us are getting questions from parents now and staff as we are going along. And they're very, very serious. So there ought to be, as I stated earlier, there should be. I don't know what the urgency of the superintendent is. I still don't understand it. You understand it better than me because I stated that you were saying, I didn't know that you knew what Ms. Colbert is saying because I'm not sure what Ms. Colbert is saying. So you at least explained it better than I could. I still don't understand why that we have to vote this today when everybody could have, I'm here to buy, and we could have voted this in this morning. I got a problem with that. I don't see where the time is a factor. As I stated, every media has asked why we did not re-survey. That survey is null and void, the one we did in May. That was May. We're in July. So many things have happened. The coronavirus, we are the, we went from being the lowest in the nation to the second highest in the nation. So I don't know why the survey has to be voted on today because once we vote on it, it's gone. I mean, that's it. I don't care what you say you're going to do to it. That is the plan. I just want to know more people, but several are, want this. And as I stated earlier, going in with thousands is better than going in with eight. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wouldn't want to be sitting in your seat. That's why I didn't run for that. Okay?
Okay, thank you. In terms of procedurally where we are, there is a motion on the table. There is a second. That motion is proper and in order. We are doing at this point is if there is need for clarification, which Member Bird was just doing, and I did, or debate, either clarification or debate. Once a motion is on the table, it's perfectly in order so that the board, when it casts its vote, board members understand for certain what they are voting on and have thoroughly discussed the pros and cons of the vote. So let's move to, Member Bird, you're actually back up again. Do you have anything else? Okay. Member Castor Dental, you're queued back-to-back. So I'll just take one of your queues. Member Castor Dental, do you have anything further to add?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Member Chair Jacobs. I am listening, but I remain unconvinced. I feel if we vote for this plan and then beg at the same time for them to release us, they will laugh at us as they reject our request. I served in Tallahassee. I heard this type of discussion when I was in the legislature. Vote for it today, please, and we promise we'll make it better later. I don't have the same amount of faith in the folks in Tallahassee. And we need, I strongly believe, we need to put that part of what we want in the plans, in their assurance, saying we will open our doors in August, brick and mortar, on our timeline, if it is safe, as we decided it's safe. Otherwise, I just feel like we're being naive. And if we put that in the plan upfront, we are committing our district to open our brick and mortar in August. And I cannot support that motion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Member Castor Dental. We are now back to Member Bird.
Yeah, I agree with Member Castor Dental that I am nervous. Dr. Jenkins keeps... Dr. Jenkins keeps saying this is not in concrete, but I am concerned with trusting the state, just like Dr. Castor Dental said. But I also feel, Member Castor Dental, that if the state rejects the waiver and laughs in our face, like you said, that this board, from our discussions today, would stand behind our desire to fight the state on opening if we felt it wasn't safe. So I feel like if that were to happen, that this board would come back together and do what we needed to do to still defy this order and face the consequences. I feel like that's what I'm hearing from several board members. So because of that, I think I would be in support of the motion because I want to make sure that we've got the launch ed plan set and that we are going to get that full funding. I don't want to be in a position where we might be stuck with just virtual or face-to-face if the worst came to happen.
Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am in support of this motion. I don't think that we can wait till July 31st to turn our plan in. That's the day that the teachers are supposed to come back to work. So to, to delay it to the 31st gives us no options for our teachers or our, our students and doesn't allow us to plan. So I just don't think at this point that we can delay it. I agree with Member Byrd that based on the sentiment of the board, that if our waiver were to get denied, that we would then take it, take it up and figure out how to proceed next. But our desire is clear, our intent is clear, that we want to be the deciding factors on when we open our schools. We need to base it on local information, on health experts in our county and do what's best for our teachers and our students. I'm also an optimist and I have faith, I have faith in, in our governor and in our Department of Education that in looking at our numbers, that they'll decide as we do that it is not safe to have our children go back to school or our teachers are classified, be on campus with numbers as high as they are today. So with that said, I am in support of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallo. So to address the issue of what is likely to happen, if this is put in as an addenda to the plan and it states that our support or that our agreement to this plan is conditioned upon having that local authority, I think it is highly unlikely that our plan is approved. And if our plan, I, I thank you for the body language. If our plan is not approved, what that means is our schools were opened brick and mortar and we will have virtual schools. And Orange County Virtual School will be the only option for our parents that don't feel safe. And if 50%, 60% of our parents don't feel safe, we will lose millions, $160 million worth of funding and we will lay off a lot of teachers. So I'm not real crazy about where we are, but I also had learned a long time ago how to count. And we have to get to five votes in order to submit anything. And at this point, for as much time as we spent talking about this over the last two meetings, I don't see another way to get to five votes other than to support this plan and wait and see what the state does. We are playing a game of chicken with the state and that's okay because right now, what can happen is they turn that down. And I think we have one more shot to come back and figure out what our next move is. But if we wait any longer to start this game of chicken, by the time we hear back from the state with a yes or a no, we will be pushing it very, very late. And we still need to survey our parents and our teachers. But we have to survey them with what the options are. We can't simply say to parents, what would you like? We have to lead. We have to offer a plan. And that's where the launch ed came from. And that's why the superintendent has responded as much as she possibly can to all the input she's received from us along the way. So I am reluctantly supporting this. And I only say reluctant, I think it's the right way to go. I'm just a little reluctant because I think it gets turned down. But at least if it gets turned down today, we have time to come back. Dr. Jenkins, you have a quizzical look on your face.
Yeah, because, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, because I understood the motion to be that we submit the plan for approval and on parallel track, we also submit this letter, this request that local control be returned to us and all of the reasons why we are concerned about opening schools, but that we submit plan as is and a request along a parallel track for that.
Just for the record, I did not ask Dr. Jenkins a question. She wanted to jump in, but I, I do appreciate the, the clarification. I think we need to get that clarified, but for the sake of the clock that was ticking down, I didn't ask her a question. I do think it's crucial though, Dr. Jenkins, that we get this clear. So back to Member Colbert, because that's initially what I thought and then I asked Member Colbert to clarify. Member Colbert, one more time, your motion was?
My motion is that we submit both. The plan and I would even add the word tentative to the date if that makes other members feel more comfortable. But we submit the plan and then we submit a waiver. It's not a request. It is under our constitutional authority that we insist on the right to determine what is safe for our district. So it is submitting the plan for approval, submitting the waiver, and then putting out the survey for teachers and parents. And in that survey, I think it's very important that in the intent to register or the register your intent, that we use that this, that the date is tentative and it's subject to change. And I do believe we have the authority after that to come back and make that change. Whether that waiver is granted or not, we are exercising our authority and we do have the authority of, as a board, to make those changes. So we're submitting both.
And there are still 49 seconds left on my time after both of those. So I do want to clarify to the board that the other options that I could see as possible motions would be that we don't submit a plan. If we don't submit a plan, we have virtual and face-to-face. Or, and I don't, the other option is we go out and survey our parents first to find out what they want, but we're surveying on the same three things and we're going to come back and submit the same three options. And we're back to where does this board stand on face-to-face? So I think the issue is to call the question with the state. Will you accept our plan with the waiver that we assert that we have? If they deny that, we get back here as soon as we can and we deal with the, what, what is our next option? So with that, let's see, who's recognized next? Member Gould.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about the current county executive order. Is Orange County still carved out to make the best decision the way that that order stands today since that March timeframe when it first came out? And if, if Mr. Pomeranian might need a little time to, to look at that and then I can go on to my other parts of the discussion.
Okay. Mr. Pomeranian, you're clear on that question? All right, back to you, Member, right, Chair?
There's, there's some things I think that could help put some clarity about how we would proceed. So if we submit the plan today, the launch ed plan today as an innovative plan so that we have a choice for every single student that we're supposed to help make successful, then we would move that forward with our exception letter. But how would these changes and these surveys and then any subsequent variations that we make under our authority, because we have to be responding to local need, would they get communicated? What mechanisms would be used to ensure that that real-time communication goes out? Because I think that part of people's angst about this is how are we going to keep this communication and this, these changes as timely and fluid as possible? And if phases change or we have the carve-out still, that should be included in our exception letter because that authority by our local phased executive order provides us the authority to vary from the straight phase one, phase two issue. And I think that could be our backup in asking for that exception. And it doesn't quite open the door wide for every other county to piggyback on the way that they hope it would, but because of how our executive who is setting these phases countywide issued it, we may have that wiggle room as they do in South Florida with the phase one option. So that's why I'm asking that question. But if we could hear from the superintendent on the communication mechanisms to have that two-way conversation.
Dr. Jenkins and then Mr. Pomeranian.
When it comes to communicating with our teachers and with our families, we would use Connect Orange, which can provide both a written text, email, as well as an audio message to our individuals. We'd, we would also ask them to stay tuned to our website. We will continually update our website based on decisions of the board and determinations from the state, what have you. We would use both of those vehicles. Member Gould.
I will tell you that the conversations that I was able to have, and mine was an open forum yesterday, I did it at two different times, but doing some kind of a web X on even what you're asking parents and teachers to do, just to have that face-to-face contact with their leaders, their area folks, if that is possible, I think will help people feel connected and at ease and then really understand what is it we're asking them to tell us. It's not them left to guessing as they fill out the survey, but almost like a mini tutorial, here's exactly what we're trying to get at so that we know when and how we can proceed with supplying your children with the best education in the safest environment possible. Mr. Pomeranian?
Yeah, and I just want to make sure I'm getting clarity on your question. You were talking about the latest Orange County Executive Order, correct? The latest Orange County Executive Order talks about face coverings and the requirement to utilize face coverings. It hasn't changed the phase that we're in. It just says with respect to face coverings, we're to follow CDC guidelines for face coverings within our enterprise. So within, so for us education.
So are we still carved out to make our own decisions about opening and closing based on the original executive order or did that sunset?
That original executive order is, let me see how I can explain this. The original executive order from the county has exempted us with respect to its applicability. The only thing it applied was face masks, the new one. Now, we still have the emergency order by the commissioner, which would cover us and impose requirements on us.
True, but within that, it says follow what your county or your local is doing. So we have something in an executive order that provides an exemption that probably other counties do not have in conjunction with their school board and their county. So I would like to know if that gives us a little more teeth in asking for the exemption that my fellow board members and I would like to see and the flexibility of going full face-to-face in brick and mortar at the beginning of the year versus a virtual then going into brick and mortar option.
I'm not necessarily that it does. I, I still think that emergency order requires us to go back face-to-face, brick and mortar, unless this Florida Department of Health, local departments of health, or the governor through executive order says we don't have to open face-to-face. That order would, would apply to us and would override any conflicting county order, but I don't necessarily think they're in conflict. I just think this order from the emergency order, we're going to have to follow unless we get a waiver from it or unless it's superseded by a future emergency order or the governor's executive order.
Folks, we, we-
Thank you.
Five-minute time on that. Member Byrd? Member Byrd is good. Member, sorry, Member Gordon.
I'm, I'm still trying to find out where we are right now. I, I know I heard some of the board members state that it's a delay. We have, we have over 14 days to get this thing right. If you let the people vote within this week, let, I mean, we could vote, people will vote today, the word will spread, trust me. You're not going to get to everybody because everybody doesn't have Connect Ed or Orange Ed or whatever we call it. They don't have phones. We don't, I, you can't even, sometime you all can't even get an email to me. I still say there's power to the people. Let the people vote on Dr. J, Dr. Jenkins' plan without a waiver. Let the people speak on this since they are the stakeholders. We just talking all about stakeholders. One day you aren't going to be a stakeholder, we all, and they're going to leave all of us out. That's what's happening with 45 up there. We can't get a word in up there. If it fails, I know this is a fact. If it fails, like you mentioned, Madam Chair, the D E O must give us time to resubmit. How in the world is it going to fail when I heard Madam Gallo and all of them say, and Madam Colbert say that they gave us a plan to make local decision? For once in our life, we can make a local decision. If we say this is the plan we want and you got over 50,000 parents and you have over 10,000 teachers going with this, how they going to turn us down? I'm, I'm just confused there. This thing could go, I just don't understand the urgency of wanting the plan pushed in right now before the people have power to vote. Dr. Jenkins know how to get things out fast. It may not be the way she want it, but I can hear it in her heart how she want it. But I want it just as bad. But I want to hear what they want to do. That's the way in the world. They don't like to do it our way. We didn't do it our way. This is their way. But if we bought it in, we're going to have to back it. And if we own it and we are stakeholders in it, we're going to find a way to make it work. I'd like to see Tallahassee turn us down. But you got more than eight people voting. I'd like to see Tallahassee turn all of the PTA down, all of the parents. I'd like to see them turn the parents down. I would. Then we would, then that way we got time to get something else in and see how much time they give us to do it. I don't think it's going to get turned down if the parents feel this is the way for them to go. And they got choices. And I, y'all know I hate that word per se, but I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, that, that we got, we got, like in the days, the 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 25th. This could be done, the plan is already written, we're not rewriting it. You don't need the waiver. Get the vote from the stakeholders and go and see what you come from. And then they'll look stupid up there turning us down. That's stupid. So that's where I stand. I'm going to hold on to it. I'm against this motion for the fact that it's only eight people voicing it and most of us have kids that are out of school. But we have grandkids or whatever. I, 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 it's just, it's just not a difficult thing. Nobody has shown me on this board why this has to be voted in today, other than those other colleagues of mine that have spoken, that they cannot support it. So I, I, I don't know where we are right now. We're, we're, we're back into the moment. I don't understand why the, that, that we cannot go with more power to the people and have more voices. And Madam Chair, you said it with the five vote, but remember you have an extra vote too. So I just, you know, so here we go with that. I love you guys for this. I love you guys for this. This is your toughest and you got more to come. So get ready for it. But always include your stakeholders. I think this board will be making a big mistake when I heard every media outlet ask Dr. Jenkins, why she didn't give another survey. That's all we had to do and we would not have been stuck here. And I'm not saying I'm blaming her, okay? But we had time, but we went away. We went away. We didn't, we didn't stick with other boards.
Time, Dr. Gordon.
We're not meeting. And I'm sorry about that. Because I know everybody needs a break. And the part that really gets me is that we got 14 days, we got more than 14 days. We got more than 14 days. And we're not asking to revamp. We're not asking to revamp, okay? Thank you for letting me know. I'm just, I just cannot vote for this. We don't need a waiver.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gordon. So where we are is we have about three more speakers, board members that want to speak, and then I am going to ask us to vote on this. So, Member Lopez, you recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, I need a clarification, maybe you can help me on this. So, um, uh, school board member Colbert, she was saying to submit the waiver with the plan, but after that, I believe, um, school board, Dr. Castredental was saying to include it in the plan. And then school board member Bird agree with who? With Karen or with the modification of Karen's recommendation or with, um, school board member Colbert? I'm just confused who is supporting who.
I think we're about to find out when we cast a vote. I know that, I, hang on, let me take that back. I realized that it's helpful for you to know.
Of course.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I don't have an answer either. So, Member Bird.
Yes, when I said that I agree with Dr. Castredental, that I am also concerned about, I understand her concerns about the state looking at our letter and possibly just saying, yeah, no, you still have to open. That was what I was agreeing to, but I'm, I'm still in favor of, I agree with Mrs. Colbert that we need to go ahead and submit the plan with the letter. I want us to try because I want us to try to get our launch ed approved. That's where I'm at.
That was very helpful.
Is that clear? Okay.
Yeah, that's very helpful. And I wasn't meaning to be flippant, Miss Lopez, Member Lopez, I was just thinking, I don't know. And then I realized, well, let me just ask, what else can we, can we address, Member Lopez?
So Karen Castredental is in favor or she's trying to, to provide a motion or a recommendation on, on doing it in a different way?
Member Castredental, can you qualify?
Yes, I am against the motion. I would prefer that we put language in the plan and then have the responsibility of the state to reject our plan. And I think we should assert our local authority, not ask for it. So I would vote against the plan that is on the table.
Anything else, Member Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Result of the school board member.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon, you're queued up again.
Madam Chair, I think I'm like, um, Madam Lopez, as I stated before, there is a motion on the floor and we've, we've gone back and forth and, okay. Okay. I know John is the, he is our lawyer, general counsel today, but generally the general counsel tried to help us with our parliamentary procedures. But I did want to remind us that there is a motion on the floor and we need to know where we are. And what I have here is that Gallo was in support, Karen cannot support, Kat cannot support, what are the other votes? Ms. Lopez is still asking clarification. I don't think she might, I can't speak for her, so I won't. And I know she's asking for clarification. And Miss Bird, I don't know what her vote was because she said she's concerned about trusting the state. That is not a vote. I didn't hear what she said, so I just need to know where we are because we keep going back. Have we polled all of the board members and gotten theirs? I know that Colbert will probably be in support because she made the motion. So I don't know if I need to write that down here as I keep my copious note.
Okay.
Can you tell me where we are, Madam Chair?
Yes, I did. Well, let me tell you again where we are. We are still going through each board member's questions and debate on this issue. Or what I just pointed out a minute ago, but that's changed, is that we had three more board members that wanted to speak to this motion before I was going to take a vote. I have to admit, I don't think I've ever seen any board spend this much time and have this much back and forth before we could take a vote. But we were very close to calling for the vote. And if it doesn't pass, then we can stay here as long as we need to. And it's possible, it is entirely possible that this board can never reach, you know, a majority. And if that's the case, then we have no plan to submit and we know what the options are. So that's where we are. I thought I was going to take two more board members, but now we have some more board members, so.
Good job, Madam Chair, on the explanation. You did a good job.
Okay, if somebody wants to call for the question, it's ripe for calling for the question. It cuts off debate once we have a vote on calling for the question. Member Lopez, you're recognized again. I'm not sure if you wanted to be, but Member Lopez, you are queued up again. Okay, thank you. Member Castredental, you're recognized. Actually, Dr. Gordon's recognized again, but since-
I'll yield, Madam Chair, you did such a good job in explaining that.
Thank you. Member Castredental, you're recognized.
I'm done.
Okay. And I'm recognized and what I was going to do at this point, but then, Member Castredental, you're recognized again after me. Did you want to speak to this again?
I do, but I won't.
Okay. Well, let's do this. Let's just find out where we are. And if this motion doesn't pass, then we will start over again. All right, let me read. Member Lopez. Member Lopez?
Yes, I, you want my, you want my vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Aye.
Thank you. Member Bird?
Aye.
Member Colbert?
Aye.
Member Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Gordon?
Nay.
Vice Chair Gould?
Aye.
Member Castredental?
Nay.
And I vote in the affirmative. The motion passes with all members except for Member Castredental, Member Gordon, and was that just, I think those two voting in the negative. Okay, we have some work to do. Dr. Jenkins, a lot of feedback from board members about the survey going out and wanting to make sure that we're very, very clear to parents where the board stands on this so that we are not misleading parents into a false sense of there will be brick and mortar, face-to-face schools. I think I'll, we'll rely on you to give us feedback on how we make sure that that survey reflects the concerns that the board has. I think we have work to do when, in putting together a plan. If we have a substantial number of parents who have needs for their students to identify an option, if we are allowed to keep our schools closed and this plan is accepted with our conditions on it, if there is, what would be those avenues, other avenues that we could support our parents without it being your traditional classroom environment, which is basically what we're trying to do here. And I think that kind of, that somewhat wraps us up. I see we have, let's see, we have Member Colbert, Member Castredental, Member Bird, Member Gallo queued back up. Member Colbert?
Thank you, Chair. Now I need to call on the public support. I need to call on the public to stand with us in asserting our constitutional authority to make the right decisions for our children, our families, and our teachers. I need you to write the governor, I need you to write the commissioner of education, I need you to write the chancellor and stand with us. I also call on all of our locally elected state legislators, five or six of whom have written letters to us or written, written letters to the governor in support of what we want to do and in support of our local authority. They have insisted on both sides of the aisle that we have the constitutional authority to make these decisions. Now I call on them to stand with us. Write, call, email the authorities in Tallahassee and tell them to stand with us and allow us to make local decisions. Locally elected officials are elected by the people. We are closest to the people and we deserve the right to make those decisions in the best interest of our constituency. That's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Colbert. Member Castredental?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just kind of clarify, we have talked, a number of the board members have talked about using a local medical advisory team, but I want to make that more official. And I'd like to invite the board members to nominate different people from different areas of expertise, whether they're pediatricians, epidemiologists, ER doctors, people from UCLF Medical School or hospitals. And I'd like to, if, if it's appropriate, make a motion that we, we put together a medical advisory team that consults with the board on the status of what's happening in our county.
Okay, we have a motion from Member Castredental. Hang on just a second. Mr. Pomerini, I think that's in order. Is it in order? I guess we are on a reopening. You tell me.
I don't, I'm not sure that it is at this meeting. I think that might be something that would have to come back to the next meeting. But I will, I will look at Robert's Rules of Orders just to make sure while you all are having the discussion.
So, Member Castredental, I suspect it will, your motion will enjoy a lot of support.
Yes, I would second that motion, Chair.
Yeah, I'm, again, I'm not sure that it's in order just because we advertised this meeting for one purpose only. So we'll let Mr. Pomerini look while we go through the rest of the speakers. And if it's not, we will get it on our agenda for our next meeting, which is still a little slow because we want this feedback from them as soon as possible. So let's see what he says, but again, I'd be very surprised that you do not enjoy unanimous support from the board on that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Member Castredental? Okay, we'll come back to you before we, before we adjourn this meeting with a yea or nay on whether or not we can take action on that. If we, if we do, or even if we don't and we come back, I think it would be good for the superintendent, knowing this is coming, to give some thought. We always want to make sure we have good diversity and representation on our board. So a little bit of thought on how we make sure that we, we come together with nominations that are diverse, not just geographically but ethnically and, and you listed all of the expertise. That's excellent. So, Member Bird, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just need some help understanding something. And I don't know why I didn't bring this up earlier, but I guess I was under the assumption, I didn't, I don't know. I, I'm concerned about why we called this meeting only to pass this one thing when we didn't really finish our board meeting the other night.
Oh, thank you. Absolutely, absolutely. So actually, John, can you clarify? Because I know that there was a legal. John, there was some, I remember getting a call from Miss Enval about her concern about carrying everything over. Do you recall what it is or Dr. Jenkins? Do you recall?
I recall.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
So the issue was twofold. While the plan was to try to finish this discussion, whether or not we carried over all of the items or let them go to the April, I'm sorry, to the August 11th meeting and what was actually going to be the best use of our time. This was so critical, we wanted concentration on this issue to complete it. Secondly, there was no need to bring a different calendar because we still need to negotiate and try to work through pre-planning and bringing individuals in earlier. So I wouldn't want to have an approval of a calendar and then a second approval of an amended calendar. That and the one other item was, that was on there, I deemed were certainly sufficient, not timely in nature, that could be moved to the August 11th. I would love to have a calendar with some information agreed upon by the August 11th meeting.
There was one other thing, I do remember. There was a legal issue. Here's the issue. We tabled, we were in the mid, middle of this vote. We tabled this action for board action only until Friday. We did not table the rest of the agenda. If you remember, I was like, let's table this. We've lost two members of our board, we have technical difficulty. I don't want to move forward without Member Gordon and Member Gould on the line and recommended we table this. So we formally only tabled this. I should have suggested that we table and suspend the rest of the meeting, but I asked the board to table this. And when Miss Enval started looking at it, she realized that the, the rest of the public was not on notice, that the rest of the meeting would continue. So we hadn't noticed this in time. Did that help?
Yes, that does help. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, and now that I know that they're going to be moved to the 11th meeting, I want to make sure that, uh, Member Gordon's concerns over the items she polled were still going to be addressed. So, okay.
Absolutely. We just want to make sure that those, those people who had items on the agenda didn't really have proper notice that we were going to take it up today.
Okay, I got it. And then the other thing I just wanted to say real fast, I have so many people reaching out to me. You didn't get this answer, you didn't get that answer. I know, I have three pages full of questions. I have submitted those questions to staff to get answers and they are, I think we need to remind people that we have the FAQ for parents on our webpage. And then we also have one for employees as well. Those questions are being updated and we're adding to those as they come in through email. So I don't want people to think that I'm not responding or getting answers to your questions. And I know I was going to try to get clarification on a lot of that today, but I think, I think today's purpose for this was to get this done. I do want to say though that there, I think for parents and teachers to make choices, that we need to be as clear as we can be on those, those surveys when we send them out and especially, especially with the launch ed, because there's still a lot of confusion. So, and I think I already sent a suggestion that we show, maybe show some video or give some more examples of what young kindergarten or young elementary days would look like at home on launch ed so people don't think they're staring at a computer the whole day. Other than that, I think I'm good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two things. The first is, is we do the survey? Can we do it on the computer as well? Because we got complaints that teachers and others weren't receiving the phone calls. So is there a way that we could, okay, I missed that, sorry. Thank you. And then, Madam Chair, there's still a lot of confusion around what we just voted on. So if you could just recap what we voted on, because there was a lot of back and forth. So people are sending me texts. Is the addendum going to be added to the plan? Is it not going to be? How are you guys going to insist on your constitutional authority? So if you could please just clarify for the public, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, and I'm actually going to turn to Member Colbert, whose motion it was. And not because I didn't understand it, but she has it written and I think it would be better to use her language that she's already written that was in the motion.
Well, I actually don't have it written, but I'll try to restate it. So we voted to submit the launch ed plan for approval and simultaneously submit a waiver that insists that under our constitutional authority, we insist on the right to determine what is safe for our district with regards to opening our schools. And we're going to call on state leaders, parents, teachers, and everyone to stand with us in support of local control with your locally elected leaders. Does that clarify? And then if we need to come back and we deem that, on the advice of our, our medical professionals locally, if we deem for whatever reason it is not safe to open our schools, then we can vote not to do that. And if they want to throw us out of the office, I will proudly walk out. That's it.
Member Gallo, does that answer your question? Member Gallo, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Gordon, you're recognized?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I know that the vote went the way it did. I wish you all the best. And I know it's supposed to be a vote book, but I want to say this. Be very careful how you speak with bulk tongue, whoever it is speaking. Because when you said you submit the plan and a waiver, and then you turn around and ask your major stakeholders to support you when you couldn't see enough, and so report D Ds to allow them to give input. Dr. Jenkins gave you a plan that she thought would work. So I don't know where all this came from. I think Madam Gallo said it well. She's getting texts. I'm getting texts. People don't understand what you just voted for. The people that's going to have to carry this out are your teachers and your staff. I have one thing to say to the parents that have really been online and have really tried to get a voice. I'm so sorry you did not get that voice. And I don't know how they didn't get the voice to you, but yet they're going to ask for us to have local control when you had no control. It is just so simple. There's no time element that would have held us up. But being that it is, it is what it is. So let's move on.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Vice Chair Gould?
Thank you very much. I would also like, in addition to having our parents and teachers support that local control so we can be as responsive as possible in the moment, based on our local numbers, not where the state is, but our local numbers happening here in our district, and ask the mayor to maybe include that exemption in a new executive order giving that authority to us in a carve-out again. Because I think that would be helpful. Also, for a future, for our next future meeting, I would like, I like the idea of having an advisory committee that is tracking the data daily, that are the experts, and also helping us to make sure we're staying up to date with the most recent and effective safety measures. And that is what I see their role being. So as we move forward. But in addition to that, they need a liaison at each school. And I would suggest that comes out of the school nurse office. If we have a properly certified health professional in that area, and we can determine at what level that is, it's not somebody who doesn't have a medical certification. It has to be somebody who can make some triage judgment. But they would keep track of what's going on in their school, be the one who is in touch with contact tracing and referrals for testing, making sure that our supply chain is not interrupted in any way and that those protocols are supported as the administrators and teachers are watching and observing what's going on in their schools with the traffic when we do go back to brick and mortar. So I know that's not today, but as we're thinking about what that future agenda is, I thought that might be helpful information to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gould. Let me go to Mr. Palmorini, who I think has an answer for Member Kestrel Dental. Mr. Palmorini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was noticed as a special board meeting. And it says in 1001 372 that you have to notice the time and purpose of the meeting. I am afraid that since we did not notice the creation of a medical advisory committee, that it would violate the rules in this statute with respect to that. I think the board can come to consensus about whether or not they want that to be created. But we would have to officially create it, I think, at a future meeting where we have noticed it properly and placed it on the agenda in accordance with state law.
Okay, perfect. So we will come back to Member Kestrel Dental before we wrap up and see if we can come to consensus. And that will speed us up a little bit.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And I have to state that I think that the discussion of creating that medical advisory is germane to the discussion that we just had. I don't think it has to be carved out or noticed. I think it's, it was part of the discussion. It was part of what we're relying on to get, to make these decisions. And so I would argue that we have the ability to start to put that team together. And we're not scheduled to meet for a long time, and I think that's a lot of time wasted. So I believe we can move forward with either a motion or a consensus. But I don't think that there is a problem with making that decision today.
So, Dr. Kestrel Dental, I definitely think we can reach consensus. In order to create it, we're probably going to need who those members are anyway. But to be quite honest, we advertised this as tabling this item that was open on the floor. This is the reason we couldn't even take up the rest of the agenda. So I would submit that procedurally and from a legal notification point, I don't think it does comply, but I don't think it slows us down at all. If the board chimes in and agrees that this is an excellent idea, then I think the superintendent needs to reach out to us. So at the very next meeting, we have the membership, which even if we said today we are creating, again, we don't have membership. So I think we're in good shape, and I don't think we'll miss a beat. I do wish our meeting, next meeting, was sooner so that we can move quicker. But, so I have several people queued up. And I think, couldn't I even just poll the board on consensus, Mr. Palmorini? So let me do that so that we know where we are. Is everybody ready if I do that right now? All right, so, Member Gallo, are you in concurrence from a consensus standpoint that we should proceed forward with creation?
Yes, Madam Chair, I concur. But I do agree with Dr. Kestrel Dental that I think we're in correct posture to take this vote. We've mentioned it before.
Okay, thank you. Member Lopez?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon?
Thank, because you're muffled up right now, I think because of the long meeting. I need you to state, what does this mean proceeding forward with the creation of what? It should be stated for the public that's listening in and trying to keep up, and for me that's listening on this side in La La Land.
Okay, it is for consensus about whether or not we should, at our next meeting, create a medical advisory board?
That should have been done earlier, so I'm going to not state that. That should have been done earlier. So whatever your pleasure is.
Okay, thank you. Member Colbert, you in agreement? We should look to do this at our future meeting? Okay, thank you. Member Bird, you're in concurrence?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Member, Vice Chair Gould, I know you're in agreement. Great. And I'm in agreement as well. Wonderful. So Dr. Jenkins will work with you, Member Kestrel Dental, and we'll hopefully have this membership on the next agenda for the formal creation.
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Member Lopez, let me recognize you next.
Can we have the surveys in other languages as well? With the explanation of each option? So the parents can understand what are the options that they're going to have and also can make the right decisions when they are voting?
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins had her headphones off. Dr. Jenkins, a question from Member Lopez about having the survey and the explanations in other languages so that all of our parents can equally participate. That's going to be critical.
That is provided. In fact, I hope folks still remember on our website, in fact, if they're looking for any information, if they click on that top bar, they can have it. The website actually provide translation in any language. We will make sure we have provision for other languages in our survey as well.
Thank you. And also the specific date on that plan for the first date of school?
August 21st.
August 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lopez. All right, let's go to Dr. Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And previous years when we did surveys with our parents, especially on the major, you know, the surveys we took at the beginning of the year with parents, most of them were done in our schools because some of our parents didn't have access. And we opened it up, but in the middle of the, how are we going to be distributing the surveys to parents? And everybody does not have a hotspot. Everybody does not have an internet. I need Dr. Jenkins to tell me. And I also would like to see what the questions are. I have not seen that. This may have been privy to it, but I have not seen it. So I would like for her to go through that today, since it's going out today. I need to see it. I don't want to sit. I need to hear it. Or if she could go through a couple, how long is the questionnaire? Because that will wear parents out. How many questions are they? And what is it related to? I don't know what y'all just voted in. And I don't know what her survey, y'all voted, that we couldn't send the survey until the plan was voted. I have not even seen the survey. And that was my point that I was making. So if she could show us, I hope she got it to display up there and show us the survey so we'll know what we are voting on. If not, it can be read. I hope it's not 30 questions. I would like to know. So the distribution, how we going to do it? How we're going to get into homes? I know my neighborhood, when we did the strategic plan, we had to go into Oak Ridge and Jones, okay? And all my other schools to vote on that survey, because all my parents didn't have access. So how are we distributing it? And there was no pandemic that we knew of at that time. So how are we getting this out to these parents? And what are the questions?
Dr. Jenkins? Dr. Jenkins?
I'm sorry, I was trying to get to my actual link to the draft survey. If you'd give me a minute, I'm happy to read it off, or we will actually send it to board members. It is not 30 questions, I can promise you. We went through it yesterday as a draft. For parents, it simply asks which of the three, it reminds them that they can look at descriptions of the three different models and which one of those they would like to register for. It asks them if they need before and after-school care. It asks if they want to participate in the lunch program, because remember, we're going to provide grab and go even for children that are in launch ed. And it asks them if they need transportation.
Is that all it is on the survey?
For the parent survey. On the employee survey, it's going to ask which, whether or not you will be able to return to O C P S. And if so, which of these three models would you like to work in? And then it also asks if they are looking for medical leave or extended leave, and gives them information about who to contact, H R or contact legal services if they have one of the other options that they are considering. And it is not...
How do you plan to distribute this to schools? You know, we had a hard time getting parents in some of our challenged areas to vote on the strategic plan, and we didn't have a pandemic. So how are we going to get these to our parents?
So actually, the survey is designed, it can go to telephones as well. It does not have to be on a computer. It can be on their smartphone.
When will we get that report back from you? How quick can we get that report back from you, showing how many parents you've contacted? Like we received an Osceola and how many have been given?
So we can certainly give a running total. We want to ask parents to give us responses within a two-week period by July 24th, I believe. We're asking for, but we can probably have running totals as Seminole and Osceola County are doing. They can tell from day to day what the numbers are for those who have made selections and what percentages seem to be making one selection over another. That's why they were able to share with us. Superintendent Griffin shared with us as early as this morning. They have day-to-day counts, and we can do the same.
And what are your plans, since you work with the think tank? What are your plans if the majority of the parents select Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C?
Our plan would be to distribute, try to match it with what our employees say their preferences are. Try to distribute our employees to match the demand from parent selections.
And if that doesn't work, I just need to know, if we failed to plan, we plan to fail. What if most parents, what if most teachers select whatever?
So our ability to place teachers is going to be based on how our parents respond. And so all of our plan...
Okay, I'm not going to put you on the spot on it. I just don't think we have a plan, because I don't hear it.
Have a plan.
Well, we need to see it as a board, because we just voted on it. I didn't, but others did. So I need to know, because those are the things that I tried to vote for the other night and could not get it in. I just am very concerned about the planning on failing and failing to plan because the teachers don't know, the parents don't know. I just hope that the parents pick the plan that suits their children. And I don't know how the parents can pick a plan that best suits their children. And then the teachers with children, that have been calling me during the evening last night, they are teachers and planning. So it'll be interesting, Dr. Jenkins. How quick can you get that to us? And when is the survey deadline?
Dr. Gordon, we're timed.
I'm happy to keep the board updated as we get that information in from our surveys.
Okay, and your survey will explain in there the disclaimer that the board has asked for the authority?
Yes.
Contingent upon the spread of the virus to not open our schools. All right, Member Gallo?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just making the point that I thought we were in correct posture, but I already made it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Member Bird?
To address Member Gordon's concern about families who won't be able to take the survey, I know you said it's available on cell phones. We have offices, our school offices are manned during the week, aren't they? Right?
That is correct. And anyone who needs to come in and use a computer because they want to do the survey, all they need to do is call and make an appointment.
Okay, that's what I thought. Also, we could call a board meeting earlier than our next one is scheduled. If we wanted to get our medical advisory board set up and started earlier, could we not?
Member Bird, we could, I'll get with the superintendent. I think we also, let's see what happens with the results that we get from F D O E. We could be in a situation where we have to.
Okay. I have a little heartburn over the survey part with the face-to-face only because I think that it's going to be difficult for parents to make a choice about face-to-face when we're saying to them that we may not be opening face-to-face, but offering some sort of face-to-face option. In other words, it might not be a classroom with a live teacher, but a space for them to do virtual learning, which is what we had been talking about, setting up community labs or centers in our schools for those students that needed a space to do their work. Not everybody watches this meeting, so they're not going to understand that. So I'm just still concerned about how that's going to be made clear in the survey. And then the last thing I wanted to say was that I wanted to make sure that it's known that I feel very comfortable. I felt very comfortable placing my vote today because I feel like I did hear from my community very loud and clear. I mean, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of emails. I spoke to many teachers, many parents. I think that, you know, I just wanted to make that clear, that I think that I am representing the wishes of my community well.
Thank you, Member. Thank you, Member Bird. Let me go to Member Gordon. Dr. Gordon, did you have more to say?
Yes, and I too feel great. I thank, I thank Member Bird for saying it. I feel great, because I feel I have spoken for those loud and clear. Those parents that have asked us, I don't feel that we fully understand this program that have been voted into. that have been voted in today. But by law, I know I'm supposed to try to make it work, but I still hate that we did this and then want the parents to come back and support us. I think the parents shouldn't be concerned about nothing right now. Get out of politics. That's what got us in this. I think they should be concerned about what program that their children are going to get in. Parents are writing me now, letting me know what they are going to be voting and requesting. So as far as I'm concerned, I feel great about what I've done today, because I know a majority of people out there don't have a voice, and they can't get to you. And we have over 213,000 students. That's a lot of moms and dads and grandparents. And I will assure you that they will hopefully make the right decision for their child. And this board has got to get with the superintendent and figure out a way to provide the resources to make this program work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Let's hear from Member Gallo. Member Gallo, did you want to add something?
I'm here, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions, and if they've been answered, I apologize. Do we know when the survey is going to go out to the teachers?
Dr. Jenkins?
We want both surveys to go out this afternoon. It'll take some time for staff to work on them, and then we have to get the translations done for our parents. But we want both surveys to go out this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And the reason I ask is that some teachers can't decide what to do with their children until they figure out what they're going to be doing themselves. And then, secondly, when we, on the survey for parents, are we going to, and I know that you just mentioned it, but I think it might be helpful if we figure out the needs of a parent, if we know how many parents need to send their kids back and how many kids need to be in school and are willing to come in school. So are we going to be asking about needs? Or just basically, are you wanting to send your child back?
Yeah, we're assuming if they select the face-to-face, it's out of need. Remember, what we're going to put on the survey and on Connect Orange is that we are encouraging as many parents as are able to to select the LaunchEd option. That means, hopefully, those who are selecting the face-to-face, it is because they just simply have that need.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, that is the last member of the board asking to be recognized. I'm going to adjourn the meeting in just a second. I do want to say that I likewise feel good about where we are. I think that the upcoming survey will be our way of also judging our parents' concerns and needs as well as our teachers. And I know I have heard from a lot of parents just since Tuesday about the concern for their children. So I think it's extremely important that we have input from everyone. And I look forward to seeing you guys in the next week and a half or maybe sooner, depending upon whether we schedule an emergency meeting next week. Thank you, and the meeting is now adjourned.
Have a great-